Good morning and welcome to this monthly meeting of the Cobb County Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is an advisory board to the Board of Commissioners. We hear all zoning and land use related matters and pass our recommendations on to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners makes the final decision on all cases and their hearing is normally the third Tuesday of the month at 9:00 AM. Before we get started, I'm going to invite Pastor Tim Renn up from the Christ Lutheran Church to lead us in a invocation.
I invite you all into a time of prayer. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks on this day for the ways in which you have woken us, called us, moved in our hearts and in our minds and brought us here together. Lord, we pray as we gather today that you are with the family of Judy Williams, that you continue to comfort them and all those who are grieving the loss of loved ones. Would be with us now as we continue to walk our journeys, help to ease our hearts and our minds, offer us comfort and inspiration for the ways that we have been called forth to benefit all your people. Give us wisdom and understanding, care and compassion. Breathe into us your breath of life. Lord, all this we lift up to you in your most holy and heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Renn. And I'm going to ask Officer from the Cobb County Police Force to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. All those who are able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as one.
Thank you. Okay, and this is a difficult meeting for most of us here today. Commissioner Judy Williams, past Chair of this Planning Commission, passed away this last week from coronavirus, which is very sad for us. She spent a lot of time here and even before she spent a lot of time. She, in 1972, Judy took a job with Cobb County in the Planning and Zoning Division and she worked there for 28 years till she retired in 2000. And then she planned, or she did run for county commissioner at that time, but she dropped out of the race to take care of her husband who became ill. And then in 2001, she was back and joined the Planning Commission. So she would have had her 20th anniversary on the Planning Commission this year. And if you put together all those years, that's, I believe, roughly 48 years doing zoning here in Cobb County. And if you think about that time period, there was roughly about 200,000 people in Cobb County when Judy became involved in zoning. And that's when Cobb County became involved in zoning because Cobb County adopted first zoning ordinance in 1972. So she's really been here from the start of planning and zoning for the county. You know, if you look, we've almost quadrupled our population in the time. And just to give you a little perspective, I-75 was still being built in Cobb County at the time and we didn't have, you know, neither of the malls were open. And that's, you know, it really speaks to a big change. And then to come back and serve 20 years on the Planning Commission and almost 20 and almost 19 years on the Board of Zoning Appeals, you know, you just don't find, you know, many people like that who are that dedicated and put nearly 50 years of their life into something. So, you know, for all of us, we're losing, you know, a Planning Commission, but more importantly, we're losing a friend. But she was also really a historian for us, a walking historian, because if we were ever working on a case and said, why did they do that back in 1980 or 1970 that way? Judy would know and she would, you know, pop up and say, oh, that was done because. So there is one person in our audience today who worked with Judy in one fashion or another for almost that entire time, and that's Garvis Sams. He's one of our local zoning attorneys, but 1974 he became a Cobb County employee at that time. And I've asked him to come forward and just say a few words. He was close to Judy.
First of all, lawyers don't say just a few words, but good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Good to see you this morning. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams. And also for the record, although it doesn't need any official memorialization, Judy Williams was, is, will always be my friend. Interestingly enough, I came to work after college for the DA's office. I had no desire to go to law school whatsoever and repeat in the footsteps of my father or come back and live in the city, but luckily Buddy Darden gave me a job, offered me one. I met Judy. I was virtually a gopher for the DA's office, although call investigator and we got to be fast friends at that time. And then ultimately, when I became an attorney, I was lucky enough to be associated with the county attorney's office, our firm represented the county until 1979 to 1987. And during that period of time, I found out that she was not only a fast friend, but just a vast compendium of knowledge, as Mr. Chairman just pointed out. And perhaps most significantly, she's the shining light that really illuminated what's best and what's good and great about Cobb County. Judy was irrepressible, she was irreverent, she was insightful, she was intuitive, she had a sharp tongue, but it was a tongue that was used in a way to rehabilitate, to help people understand and to make them familiar enough with the process to feel comfortable. Because to many people that don't do this every day like we do, it's a foreign process and it was important for Judy to enlighten the folks as they came through this process. When she was with zoning and our careers coincide, I was with the county attorney's office, I used Judy as my expert witness. She could wear a developer's hat, an appraiser's hat, a planner's hat, an architect's hat, a lawyer's hat. And so we used her as a cleanup batter. And sometimes objections would come as to whether she was an expert, but to a judge, she was always declared as an expert in her respective field. And as they say, as a cleanup hitter, she knocked it out of the park every time and did her best to be unshakable. In fact, I'll have to say that I've had many attorney at the time that said that she was what they would call a rattlesnake on cross examination. And I know Fred understands that. You just didn't answer the question, you didn't know the answer to. But she was tough as nails, just as sweet as she could be. She dedicated her life to her faith in her family first, her community second, and the county third. But she was a source of strength for the county, the backbone of the county. The phraseology, she knows where all the bodies are buried, she knows where all the bodies are buried is absolutely, absolutely true. To say that Judy will be missed is an understatement. To say that she'll be forgotten is a ludicrous statement because I'll never forget her. And seeing her photographed there with the flowers in memoriam, I want to thank the Planning Commission and Planning Commissioners and staff for remembering her in that way. She would appreciate it, she learned it, she cherished it, and I think it's irrebuttable that she was a shining light for this county then and now and will be in the future. I miss our calls. She didn't like to work on the weekends, she says, my weekend, leave me alone, but I miss our Sunday evening calls. I miss our meetings, I miss our texts. She'd get the best pre-COVID hugs of anybody you could ever imagine, so I miss those as well. And I want you all to remember, her son Keith, who's been a backbone for the family during this ordeal, and of course, her daughter-in-law Teresa, her two grandchildren, Amber and Emily, and then she had a great-grandson named Lucas, who she was just a little bit proud of. And so I understand that, having grandchildren myself. In some instances, in recognition of the passing of someone, you'll have, you know, a moment of silence. What would Judy wouldn't last 20 seconds with a moment of silence. So she would say, get on with your life, get on with your work, don't forget me, please remember me, but do so in the kind of light that I would remember you. So, Madam Chairman, bless your heart, we love you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Garvis. It was a fine tribute. Would anybody else like to say anything before we move on to our regular business? Okay. Well, Judy will be sorely missed. Okay, with that, we appreciate everybody indulging us for a couple of minutes, but after she spent nearly 50 years, we thought we should do something special for her and her family. Okay, with that, John, what's on our agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Thank you, Garvis. That was great. Today's hearing will follow the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, we would ask the applicant to please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call to see if anyone here is opposed in person to the case we're talking about. We would ask anyone here in person opposed, please stand and raise their hands so they can be counted for the record. After recognizing the applicant and any opposition, the applicant and the opposition will be asked to come forward to be sworn in so they can present testimony to the Planning Commission. The applicant will testify first and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, so please convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there were one person who wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want to cover the same information twice. And after that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. The board may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front or ask more questions related to the case. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold or continue the case at hand. Today's hearing is going to be unique because today's hearing is, it's a hybrid, in-person and virtual hearing. We do allow virtual participation and there is signup sheets and login boxes on the county website. I'm going to take a moment to explain the format for our virtual speakers and we do have a number of people signed up to speak virtually on a number of cases. We're going to recognize those onsite and support opposed and in support of a case. For the virtual attendees, to support or oppose a case, you want to indicate you wish to speak in your Q and A box. For instance, if you want to support a case, you would type in the letters SUP to support and then the case number. So for instance, if you want to support case Z123, you would punch into your Q and A box SUPZ123. Or if you want to support and also speak in the case, you would want to punch into your Q and A box SUP, the case number, Z123, and then the word speak. So we know that you want to say a few words about the case. Conversely, if you want to oppose a case, the procedure is pretty similar. To oppose a case, in your Q and A box, you would want to type in OPP to oppose and then the case number. So for instance, you would type in OPPZ123 to oppose case 123. If you would like to say a few words about your opposition, the format's still the same. You would want to type in OPP, the case number, and then the word speak. So for instance, to oppose case Z123, you would punch into your Q and A box OPPZ123, speak. For the virtual speakers, you'll be called by name, your line will be unmuted, and you will say your name, where you live, and you will also affirm that you have been sworn in to present testimony to the board. Mr. Chairman and Board, there is one case that requested to be withdrawn late Sunday night. So if the board could vote on this, the applicant for LUP5 of 2021, Aneesa Thomas, did submit a letter to withdraw this case Sunday night. So the staff would ask the board to withdraw this without prejudice.
Okay, and I believe Alice is handling that case, so?
I would approve moving it to consent, or to be held, sorry.
Actually, to withdraw.
Withdraw.
Okay. And do I have a second on the motion to withdraw? Second from Tony?
And that's without prejudice, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, withdraw without prejudice. And second's okay with that? Okay. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor, raise your hand, and that carries four to zero to approve the withdrawal.
All right, thank you. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued or held that will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z52 of 2020, Carl Edward Dills. This case was continued by the staff until the March 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission's zoning hearing. So Z52 of 2020 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z59 of 2020, Tamina A. Potrory. This case was continued by the staff until the March 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission's zoning hearing. So Z59 of 2020 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z61 of 2020, Green Line Partners LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission's zoning hearing. So Z61 of 2020 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z72 of 2020, North Point Ministries Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the March 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission's zoning hearing. So Z72 of 2020 will not be heard today. ROD1 of 2020, Atlantic Realty Acquisitions LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission's zoning hearing. So ROD1 of 2020 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z3 of 2021, Darren Martin. This case was continued by the staff until the March 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission's zoning hearing. So Z3 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z6 of 2021, Lloyd Development Services. This case was continued by the staff until the March 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission's zoning hearing. So Z6 of 2021 will not be heard today. And finally, rezoning case Z8 of 2021, Beazer Homes LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission's zoning hearing. So Z8 of 2021 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the people in today's audience who are here in person, if they have a cell phone, to please put your cell phone on mute as the ringing does interfere with the broadcasting presentations. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if within two years immediately preceding the filing of a rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table in the back of this room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for February 2nd, 2021. First case on consent is rezoning case Z2, Hector Hernandez Castillo. The applicant is requesting rezoning from NS to R15 for a single-family residence in landlots 638 and 695 of the 19th District. The property is located on the southwest side of Pear Road, southwest of the intersection of Pear Road and Powderway. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on November 30th, 2020 with the district commissioner's approval of minor modifications. Number two, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number three, water and sewer comments. And number four, department transportation comments and recommendations. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z2? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z4, Kenneth E. Moore, requests rezoning from R20 and O9 to CRC for an office retail use in landlot 1019 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east side of Ostel Powder Springs Road, east of the intersection of Ostel Powder Springs Road and Smith Drive. The planning commission recommends deletion to NRC subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on December 3rd, 2020 with the district commissioner's approval of minor modifications. Number two, variance as detailed in the zoning comments. Number three, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number four, water and sewer comments and recommendations. Number five, department transportation comments and recommendations. Number six, 35-foot landscape buffer to be planted where possible along the eastern property lines. And number seven, property uses to be only professional office or neighborhood retail uses with no outdoor storage and no outdoor display of merchandise. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z4? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z5, Simone A. Sores, requests rezoning from R20 and GC to R20 for a single-family residence in landlot 211 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Lucy Drive, north of the intersection of Lucy Drive and Gruers Chapel Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on December 3rd, 2020 with the district commissioner's approval of minor modifications. Number two, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number three, water and sewer comments and recommendations. And number four, department transportation comments and recommendations. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z5? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP1, Garfield McCook, requests a temporary land use permit renewal for a personal care home in landlot 222 of the 20th District. The property is located on the south side of Stilesboro Road, west of the intersection of Stilesboro Road and Alatuna Lane, or Alatuner Lane. Staff recommends approval for 24 months subject to the following conditions. Number one, maximum of 10 residents. Number two, maintain turnaround capabilities of driveways so that vehicles can exit the property forwards. Number three, no exterior signs. Number four, maintain all state and county required permits. Number five, maintain size of the lot as it currently exists. And number six, department transportation comments and recommendations. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP1? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP2, Young S. Utoche, requests a temporary land use permit renewal for clothing alterations in bridal gown sales in landlot 126 of the 20th District. The property is located on the east side of Kimberly Road, north of the intersection of Kimberly Road and Old 41 Highway. Staff recommends approval for 24 months subject to the following conditions. Maximum number of truck deliveries to be one per month. And number two, maximum number of customers to be no more than two per day and by appointment only. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP2? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP3, Living Hope Lutheran Church, requests a temporary land use permit renewal for an early childhood learning center in landlot 201 of the 20th District. The property is located at the northwest intersection of MacDobbs Road and Stilesboro Road. Staff recommends approval for 24 months subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on October 22nd, 2020 with the district commissioner's approval of minor modifications. Number two, attached previously approved traffic flow plan. And number three, department transportation comments and recommendations. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP3? Let the record show there's no one here opposed to LUP3. And finally, LUP6, I think there's one more after that. LUP6, Caitlin Costello, requests a temporary land use permit for a flower farm and sales in landlot 156 of the 1st District. The property is located on the north side of Sunset Trail, east of Bayless Drive. Staff recommends approval for 24 months subject to the following conditions. Number one, no sales from this location. Number two, no exterior signs. And number three, department transportation comments and recommendations. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP6? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And lastly, LUP8, Jeff Randall, requests a temporary land use permit renewal to allow temporary occupancy of an RV in landlot 166 of the 16th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Remington Court, northeast of the intersection of Remington Court and Treckham Road. Staff recommends approval for 24 months subject to the following conditions. Number one, family use only. Number two, mobile home to be removed once family use is not needed anymore. And number three, DOT comments and recommendations. Is there anyone here in person opposed to LUP8? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And that completes the consent agenda. Mr. Chairman and Board.
Okay, thank you, John. And does anybody have any additions or changes to that? Okay, I do. On Z2, add an additional stipulation that applicant shall have 60 days to come into compliance with outdoor storage regulations. And then on Z4, I want to make sure that we include the stipulation letter dated January 29th, 2021 from Garvis Sams. And then we do have a few additional stipulations that I've discussed with Mr. Sams. The following apply to the property at 4415 Ostel Powder Springs Road. Canopy to be repaired and painted or removed within one year of BOC zoning decision. The fence at the front of the property, either on or near the new right-of-way, to be removed within 90 days of BOC zoning decision. Paint or replace garage doors within one year of BOC zoning decision. And then we move on to all signs to come into conformance with current county ordinance within 60 days of BOC zoning decision. And just to stress, all staff comments and recommendations, including the revised DOT recommendations and the revised stormwater management recommendations. So that's on those two. Anybody have anything else? Okay, then I'll, yes, John.
I believe the PC was talking about adding rezoning case Z7 to consent agenda. So would it be the board's wish for me to read that in?
Yeah, go ahead and read that in and we'll...
Okay. Rezoning case Z7, John Gibson, requests rezoning from GC to NRC for light automotive repair in landlot 85 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Ecton Drive and on the south side of Old Noonday Schoolhouse Road, west of Canton Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z7? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And, Mr. Summer Howard, please read your condition.
Turn your mic on, please.
I make the motion to approve Z7.
Okay. I guess we need a motion to add it to the consent agenda and then we'll...
Need a motion to add it and then a motion with the stipulation.
Right, then we'll have a motion for the whole consent agenda, so...
All right. I make a motion to add Z7 to the consent agenda.
Okay. Second from Tony. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, raise your hand. So that carries four to zero to add that to the consent agenda. Now, was there, did we get the stipulation letter included in that, John? I missed whether you read that or not.
No, I didn't read that.
Okay, so we need to add the stipulation letter on Z7.
And all staff comments.
And all staff comments and recommendations. So do you have the letter, the date of the letter and the, I did print it. I did print it.
Having some...
Hold on.
There's areas of what all it was.
Okay.
Addition to my...
Okay.
Making sure I had them. The limitation on uses is no massage business, no tattoo or body piercing, no pawn or title shop, and no check cashing.
Okay.
And all other NRC uses will comply with the NRC regulations.
Okay. And that's what you have? Okay, so that's all you needed to add?
Yes.
With that, I'll look for a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Somebody want to make that?
So moved.
And second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor? And that carries four to zero. Okay, what's next, John?
Mr. Chairman, if we could take a five-minute break so I could email the folks waiting in the parking deck that they can leave.
Sure, sure. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break so that we can notify those people on consent, that they can go ahead and leave because we've had them for COVID waiting outside the building Welcome back. We've now notified all the people out there who were waiting to see if they had to come in or if their cases were moved on, so appreciate it. What's next on our agenda, John?
Yes, sir. Moving into the continued case agenda. First case is rezoning case Z39 of 2020, KO Management Incorporated. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from CF and GC to RE5 for a subdivision in land lot 37 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Pocket Drive, east of Mableton Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in person opposed to rezoning case Z39?
No.
Mr. Chairman, there is no one here in person opposing Z39. There is one person who has signed up virtually to speak against Z39. So at that time, we'll make that person live.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Parks.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Parks, officer of the law firm is Samz Larkin and Huff, and I represent KO Management in relation to this rezoning application. It's been pending for a little while, and I appreciate the board's patience. We've made quite a few changes as we've gone through the process that have been productive and made for a better project. So if I can go through a quick presentation on the location of the property and the things that are significant about reviewing the proposal, I'm just going to ask for next slide, but I'm sitting here holding this. This is an aerial of the property. As you can see, it's on Mableton Parkway, just south of Veterans Memorial Highway. Some of the features that, if you are familiar with the area, you'd know is, quite frankly, the Quick Trip is at the intersection just north of us there, at the intersection of Veterans Memorial and Mableton Parkway. And then Pocket Drive is just to our north. So this is sort of a transition piece as you get from the commercialization of the Veterans Memorial going down to the residential further south of us. So it's a transition piece, so you have to deal with transition pieces differently. The property is in a medium-density residential land use plan, which is five units per acre in the land use plan. You can see it's well within that land use plan, but just to the north is a community activity center. And it's the bright red, which is community activity center, which signifies more intensity than lowly neighborhood activity center. And I think it's important to consider that as you consider this transition property. This is the zoning on the property, and the property is zone general commercial with a little portion of it zone CF, which stands for future commercial. Would like to ask Ms. Williams why it's not FC. She probably would give an answer as to why it's not FC and it's, you know... But it's future commercial, which is CF. And you can see across the street, we had a case here a couple of years ago that zoned all that property RA5. And it's the same developer that zoned that property. And so it's a property owner or developer that has an interest in the area and an understanding of the market for the area. So again, it's general commercial. And behind us is general commercial, and the properties that are general commercial in a community activity center are, in fact, a good usable general commercial property. This is the site plan and the changes that we made as we went through the process. It's got some shape considerations. It's a transition, it's medium-density residential. The original plan that's in your book had a entering the subdivision, you would have townhomes. And then wanted a different product, a mixture of products. So we had a group of townhomes at the beginning, and then you transitioned to single-family homes. And it was awkward to put those two products together on one road. And how it worked and related to each other was one of the reasons why we had to, you know, back up and rethink the whole concept. And I will confess that Mr. Porter, the district representative for the planning commissioner, recommended that we look at a paired unit proposal. I use that term paired unit. Sometimes it's used duplexes, which has got sometimes a negative connotation. But in this case, it gives us the opportunity to be able to get the density that is needed to have this transition from the commercial to the residential. Our density is at five units per acre, which is consistent with the land use plan, and it's going to create a nice, consistent neighborhood. In the way, I've talked to several developers who build in the townhome attached market, and what you get when you go with a paired unit is every unit is an in-unit. When you build townhomes, the in-units are the easiest ones to sell, the middle units are the harder one to sell. So what this does is basically mixing and matching to where you've got every unit is an in-unit. So you need to look at this and think of this really as a townhome project, just with the maximum townhomes is two attached, so each building has got an in-unit. Some of the features are, we come in off of Pocket Drive instead of coming off of Mableton Parkway. Consistent with the zoning across the street, we've got a landscape strip along Mableton Parkway, so we will have buffering and landscaping along Mableton Parkway, and that is designed to be consistent with what we did across the street for the same developer. We have guest parking and a parking lot there. We've got behind that will be our detention, so it's tucked away and not negatively affecting the neighborhood. And I'm going to share with you some of the architectural renderings that were contained in my letter dated January 22nd. This is some concepts of the architecture that would be in this development. As you can see, it's a modern, it's a different architecture, which is exciting to have someone trying to come up with something that does not look cookie cutter and the same as everything else. When you've got a 26-lot development, you need to do something to differentiate yourself from the other product in the area. One thing that has come up is in my stipulation letter, we did say that the garage doors, although they look cool, glass, we've agreed that they will not be glass. Because, you know, my garage looks just like that with just a car and nothing else in it. But, you know, I know, I understand other people don't do that. So we have agreed that, in fact, those garage doors will, in fact, not be glass. But you can see, this is a product that is not available in the area. It will provide a great opportunity for product. And you can see how they live as a paired unit. Again, it's a townhome with each unit having, being an in-unit. So you've got some living in your backyard, and on the side yard is your side patio is available. Some of them have some rooftop living and sucks. You know, your staff, your professional staff went through this, and this is based upon the old site plan but the same density. And the staff recommended approval of the application because it's consistent with land use plan, because it is a transitional property. And so I think it's very important in your consideration to recognize, in fact, that the staff does recommend approval of the application. The other thing, more important than staff recommendation for approval, is Mableton Improvement Coalition's recommendation for approval. They're a very active civic organization in the area that's very concerned about how their area grows. And they have submitted a letter that they support the application with a couple of conditions, some of which we would like to address. They have recommended the creation of a landscape review committee. This is consistent with what is across the street, and we are great with that. We will work with them to make sure that the, especially now that we're on both sides of Mableton Parkway, that the landscaping is consistent and attractive and does what we all want it to do. We will be working on how the amenity package will work as 26 units. You know, it's going to be not an active amenity package, it'll be passive, it'll be creating some open space, you know, probably tied into the guest parking in the mail kiosk. So we will be working on how we will provide the amenities there. The rental limitation, we would ask that it be four units instead of two. That's still, it will not be a rental community at four units. That's, you know, you've got, you know, 26 homes, four of them would be potentially rental. Again, that is well within, you know, a normal, single-family neighborhood to have that kind of number of rental. Obviously, you have rental situations pop up in several different situations. The HOA, they would like us to have the HOA be responsible for maintenance. These are going to be in the mid $300,000. We would ask that the HOA with 26 units not be responsible for the outside maintenance, but that we would have strict covenants and requirements on the exterior maintenance and exterior painting and that the painting go through an architectural control committee and that we would deal with that with the covenants, and each homeowner would have that responsibility. And then we have been working on the site plan and with you, what you have before you handed out beforehand is a further changing of the site plan. We've only got one buffer variance or setback variance on lot number 15, where instead of 30, we're at 22 feet at the very south end there. It's adjacent to the, it's a very long and deep lot that's next to us, is way in the back of that lot. It's a treed section of it, really doesn't have an impact on it. But we've shifted around to try to, we used to have four or five different intrusions, and now we're down to that. So we'd ask that you follow this latest site plan and allow that one intrusion in that area there to be able to get this project going. And my client is excited to be able to do another project in this area of Mableton, bringing a product that will be, sell very well, create the transition from the commercial to the residential that will set a standard going down Mableton Parkway. So we appreciate your time. We ask that you follow your staff recommendation for approval, that you use the Mableton Improvement Coalition's recommendation for approval with those minor changes that I've mentioned. So I appreciate your time, appreciate your consideration. With that, I would just like to briefly honor Ms. Williams. When I started at the county in 1994 as a county attorney, I had gone through three years of law school. I clerked for a judge for two years. I'd taken land use law in law school, so I knew, I knew stuff. And I was on the fifth floor, and at that time, the attorney's office and the community development office, the zoning office were all on the fifth floor. And one of my first days, I was sitting down to meet Ms. Williams so she could enlighten me on exactly how zoning really worked. So I really appreciate it, all the time, all the years I've worked with her. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Parks. Okay, I believe we have one person who would like to speak virtually.
Yes.
One person in opposition, Robin Meyer. We've been unmuted. It's your turn to speak.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer, and I'm the chairman of the zoning committee for the Mableton Improvement Coalition. I appreciate the opportunity to participate virtually in the hearing this morning. Unfortunately, I didn't enjoy the same good sound quality this morning so far as I usually have, so I apologize, but I did not clearly understand some of what Mr. Huff said, so please excuse me if I repeat something by asking for something that he's already agreed to or otherwise not properly addressing a point that he made. We, as our letter suggests, as our letter says very straightforwardly, we will... we welcome this development. This is the sort of infill development and redevelopment of our community that we've been looking for, for quite some time. So specifically, we appreciate the agreement, I believe, to the landscape review committee. We appreciate the fact that there is room for an amenities area in this, this community. And we understand, of course, given the small number of units, that it would not be anything extravagant in that area. But we would like the stipulations letter to be amended or a condition attached that describes what amenities will be offered in this area. Will it be a gazebo? Will it be a picnic table? Will it be a tot lot? Will it be a dog walk area here or somewhere else? Rather than simply an open field or, for all we know, not an open field. Next, on the rental limitation, I think our standard in the recent pass has been 10%, which works out to two units. Given the arithmetic here, certainly we're awfully close to three units. So we could, we could be comfortable with that as well. But probably the thing that I want to address with the most specificity has to do with exterior maintenance. These are very unusual units. The, they have flat roofs, which is not something most homeowners are prepared to deal with. They have an unusual look to the exterior. I'm not entirely sure exactly what sorts of materials those are. They don't appear to require a lot of paint and maintenance. So I don't think it would be much of an expense for the HOA. But I think that the marketability and the long-term viability of this community is based upon this crisp, clean, innovative, modern look. And I would hate to see that diminished by a homeowner choosing a shade of brown paint that's not exactly the right color brown. Or worse still, having to deal with roofing issues on a flat roof. That simply is not the, not the kind of work that most homeowners are prepared to undertake and most residential roofing contractors are not prepared to undertake. So with that, I would ask that you please recommend approval of this application. But please do protect the development and the future homeowners with the requirement that the HOA be the manager of that exterior maintenance. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Robin. And are there any other speakers? Okay, with that, we'll close the public participation part of the hearing. And it's back to this board, this case that I'm handling. There's a few issues as we go through the site plan. First of all, we've made a lot of progress. You know, we originally stood it out with a mixture of townhomes and single-family detached homes, which just really didn't work on this small parcel. So I think this is a plan that works a lot better. There is some additional tweaking to be done to the plan, though. The first item is the engineer. Cobb County has a requirement that driveways be 50 feet from an intersection. And the engineer in this case didn't measure that 50 feet properly to Cobb standards. So there's going to have to be some adjustment to pull those driveways even further away from the intersection. And they can get with, you know, Department of Transportation on exactly how they should be measuring those so that we get that proper. So that's going to cause the units to slide a little bit more interior near the, near Pocket Drive. So that's one issue. We did, and the very most updated, did get what we would call a flag lot for detention. So we have the 20-foot of public frontage that stormwater management requires. So we got that fixed. And then we come down to the parking lot. But there's a lot of empty space there at the parking lot, which, you know, a lot of times good, you can put the amenity there. But in this case, if you go down the street, we're cramming a lot of stuff in the end of the cul-de-sac and a whole lot of driveways. It's nothing but about eight driveways at the end of the cul-de-sac, which I don't even know. And maybe I should ask Amy Diaz to come up and see if the county has any standard on if there has to be separation on those driveways or anything like that. Do you want to come on up, Amy? We'll get back to you in a minute, Parks. Question I forgot to ask you before, so I'm just popping it right on you.
Amy Diaz, DOT. So the recommendation is that we have, driveways are considered minor intersections. And so the 50-foot spacing is recommended. However, with duplexes and things that are close, we understand that they can't get it. We would just recommend they have the most spacing they are available to get.
Okay, okay. So I would say having eight driveways that almost touch each other isn't a whole lot of spacing. So I think we need to work a little bit on that. Did you see anything else on the site plan that gives you concern right now?
Not that I have on top of my head now.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Amy? Alice, I apologize. With the flowers, you're going to have to just speak up if you have something because I can't see you. So, and one way I think we can accomplish getting more spacing down at the end without just dropping units is there's probably 40 feet or so that the parking lot can be moved north towards Pocket Drive. And then that 40 feet could be used to shift everything around and get some more space at the end of the cul-de-sac. You know, at the same time, hopefully, we can get rid of the variance down in the end of the cul-de-sac that's left and possibly shift the unit on lot 20 and 19 a little bit. Even if that switches to a small variance, it's probably better at that location than where the variance is located right now. And that should also allow things to spread out a little bit. So that would be, you know, one of the other things we'd like to see. I would like to see all the, well, one, put in buffers on basically all sides of this property. You know, from a very technical standpoint, the code doesn't require a buffer to these adjacent properties because the adjacent properties are zoned, for the most part, general commercial. But they're really residential properties that in 1972, that designation was put on there for some reason. But they're all residential, so they deserve, normally be as, if they were zoned residentially, a buffer. So a 10-foot buffer around the edge. And also, we have this 10-foot landscape enhancement strip along Pocket Drive. Like to see all those put in HOA-owned properties, all the buffers and that. That way, there's no issue maintaining them. Talked about that. Talked about that. Talked about that. And a note to staff on this one, and maybe to G.I.S. and whoever coordinates it all. I noticed that the G.I.S. drawing of this property does not match the site plan, especially when you get over to, I guess it's Old Gordon Road. This kind of comes in a point, and the G.I.S. shows it as having some frontage on ridge. So we just need to figure out what the discrepancy is. I'm willing to bet the site plan's right. And, you know, probably work with the tax assessor's office to adjust the lot lines, but I don't want to put the wrong zoning on somebody's property.
Yeah, and I did confirm that this is based upon a current survey. So it should be accurate.
Okay, yeah. So that was just one, you know, hopefully minor thing, but it avoids problems in the future on it. I do, you know, I do take to heart Robin Meyer and the Mableton Improvement Coalition's, you know, desire regarding the exterior maintenance. I think they're absolutely right. If you just get somebody getting the wrong shade or one person maintains it every five years and somebody else waits 10 years, you know, this community's not going to look the same. And the roofs are a big deal. So, you know, I'd like you to strongly consider and discuss with the client doing the exterior maintenance and the HOA. I think it would be far more cost-effective for the homeowners, too, especially with those flat roofs, to get a roofing company when they need replaced to do them all. It's going to be a lot more cost-effective than doing them one roof at a time. Let's see. You know, the 10% rental limit, you'd like to go essentially to 20. I think maybe splitting the babies good and doing three.
We're fine with the three that Mableton Improvement Coalition.
Okay, and I would say some description of the amenities. We know at 26 units, you're not going to have a ton of amenities here. But you may have a little fire pit area and some seating around it, something like that. You know, or possibly a pavilion, just something to brighten a community feel to it.
Yeah, and we understand. And we will be able to do that when we finally establish, you know, as you suggested, shifting the parking. Its location and size wasn't clearly defined until all that's been shifted.
Yeah, and I would think there's still some room, kind of, on the Mableton Parkway portion of the parking that could provide an amenity. Or you might end up with room for an amenity at the end of the cul-de-sac once we shift everything around. So if you can take a look at that. You came right back up. I didn't know if you had anything else you want to say.
No, I was just, I figured you were going to ask me a question. I mean, maybe I was mistaken.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Parks or anything on this one? Okay, go ahead.
In listening to both you and Robin bring up the issue about rental units, one question that came to mind, what happens is it gets harsh when you're the, say if there's a three-unit limitation and you're the fourth unit owner, it's a little harsh on you. I'm just curious, does anybody put in any HOA documents, say, a monthly or annual fee to have it go into a rental program at all to try to dissuade people from holding long-term as renters rather than owners?
I have not seen that. That's, you know, that, you know, if you asked if it's ever been done, I'm sure it's been done, but I've not seen it.
And the other question, has anybody ever put a prohibition on the initial owner being an investor rather than being an owner occupant? Something along the lines of the initial owner must take up occupancy within 90 days after closing, something to that effect. Has that ever been tried to at least start it off on the right foot without a lot of investors?
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, that could be done. I'm sure it's been done. But, I mean, at three units and 26, I mean, I don't, I don't see that as a problem in this situation. I could see it if we were saying no rental restriction and then saying, well, no rental restriction, but we're going to make sure all the initial buyers are occupied.
Yeah, I just remember back when I, when I had kids in undergraduate schools and thought about buying condos in some of these places. And then they all had restrictions on the percentage of units that could be put in a rental program. And I thought that would be pretty draconian when your kid graduates and then you end up having to find some other college kids to run a unit who might not take care of it quite as well. But, you know, I know that's a college experience rather than a general populace sort of thing. But I just throw those out as concepts that might, might help keep things good. And I appreciate your consideration of Robin's other comments as being things that might help in the long-term maintain the quality and character. I just think it might get really difficult if the exterior of the units were, especially in a duplex context where the requirement, the requirements fell squarely on the owners. I'm not sure if that would get done right or uniformly at all. I appreciate, appreciate your working with the folks in Mableton. Thank you.
Okay, and that's all I have. So with that, I'm going to make a motion that we, oh, you have something, Tony? Sorry.
I would. On, on the management of the units and the exterior, I would say, for instance, like our HOA just went through a large revision of the rules and regulations. And to the point that, you know, it specifies, and we started as a John Whelan community. But it actually specifies in the covenants, the specific color palette and the specific colors that can be used, for instance, from Sherwin-Williams. So I think that that perhaps might be a middle ground if the HOA could, you know, rules specify the specific colors, you know, right down to actually the mixology that you would use at Home Depot or someplace. And consider perhaps a restriction on the frequency at which things have to be repainted and done. And that might provide some flexibility for the units, but still address the need of making sure it's all done on a regular basis. Just one idea from what we do with our HOA.
Okay, thank you, Tony. With that, not seeing any other speakers. We, I'm going to make a motion that we hold Z39 till our March hearing and ask you to make all those revisions we talked about, Parks. Do I have a second? Second from Alice? Any further discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor of the motion? That carries four to zero in favor. Okay, what's next, John?
Okay, next told case is rezoning case Z67 of 2020. Yolanda Kreese, request rezoning from LRO to NRC for a barber beauty shop in Land Lot 1006 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east side of Osta Road, north of Elmwood Drive. Is the applicant present? Applicant is here. Is there anyone here in person opposed to rezoning case Z67? No. The director says none opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning.
Hello, how are you today?
Great.
Okay, give us your name for the record and then.
Yolanda Hillary Kreese.
Okay, and you have 10 minutes to tell us about what you want to do with the property. And, you know, you have up to 10 minutes. You don't have to take the whole thing if you don't want, but.
Okay, thank you. I'm a master stylist, cosmetologist, and educator at Pauline Hiram High School. And I got this location. It's a house, and it's all run down, decapitated. So I really wanted to make a salon in the use of, use of space.
Okay, okay. So you're seeking rezoning and, I don't have the page here. You're seeking rezoning because of the stipulations, I think, that are currently on it and the uses. So you want to use it for a salon, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. And you want to tell us what you intend to do, since you said the property's dilapidated, what you intend to do to fix it up and?
Had the windows, the windows are all gone out. Just to beautify it a bit, a lot, with landscaping around.
Okay, good, good. Is there anything else you want to tell us right now?
No.
Okay, just stay right there. Do we have any people wishing to speak in opposition?
No.
Okay, there's nobody wishing to speak in opposition. So I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to this board, and I'm handling this case. I did get your most recent site plan that you revised and added parking and that on.
Yes.
There are some issues with that in that the way the parking's laid out does not meet county standards. And, you know, if you have angled parking, which you showed on the site plan, it has to be a one-way traffic flow pattern because otherwise you're asking people to kind of back up and try and turn around to go back the way opposite the angle that they're parked at. And unfortunately, there's just not enough room to do what we call head-in or 90-degree parking on the side of the house because of the width that's required for the driveway and then the width for the parking. I think it's. to do, fix and repair the property and provide some landscaping and some parking. You know, those were supposed to have been done years ago now, and they never were, but nobody ever occupied the property either during that time. So I'm looking at this. You're probably going to have to expand your parking back a little further, maybe possibly behind the house? Is that something you're willing to do?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then there's, one of the requirements from the other case was to put what we call an eight-foot landscape enhancement strip along the road frontage on your property, and that's basically, you know, shrubs and that, just to beautify it.
Definitely.
So you're okay with doing that as well?
Oh, yes, that was.
Okay, and some of the other was to repair the building facade, window trim, you know, crawl space access and get all those things done.
Definitely.
Okay, okay. So that's, those are the bigger items. I think this one can probably be done because they're really just talking about figuring out how to do the parking, so we can probably have the district commissioner just sign off on a parking plan afterward, or zoning division manager sign off on that so that we get the parking up to county standards and that. And you can work, you can contact the county staff to find out about what all the requirements are in that, or your engineer who laid this out can contact them. It's all in the county ordinance as well. It can just be, you know, pulled up and read under 134272. Does anybody else have any questions or anything? Okay, with that, you can go ahead and have a seat.
Have a seat.
I want to make a motion regarding this. Okay. Oh, and one thing that I previously discussed was the fact that this is a small property and something that we normally go with LRC on versus NRC because of the small size and all of that, so. Make a motion regarding Z67 to recommend deletion to LRC subject to all following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict for beauty slash barber shop use only. The site plan received January 22nd, 2020, allowance for additional parking to meet code requirements, and the eight-foot landscape enhancement strip adjacent to Astell Road right away. Landscaping to be provided around the building, landscaping plan to be submitted to the county landscape architect for approval, enhancement strip and landscaping to be completed within 90 days of the board of commissioners zoning decision, repairs of the building fascia, windows, window trim, crawl space access to be completed within 90 days of the board of commissioners zoning decision, parking lot to be added with at least five striped spaces to county standards, and the parking plan to be approved by the zoning division No certificate of occupancy until all stipulations have been completed. The district commissioner may approve minor modifications except for those that increase overall building square footage, change that is in conflict with an express stipulation or condition of zoning, or requires a variance or violates Cobb County ordinance. And I think we can put that on the consent agenda for the board of commissioners as well. So that's my motion. Do I have a second? Okay, second from Alice. Any further discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Call for the vote, all in favor, and that carries four to zero. So your case has been recommended for approval with the board of commissioners, and you can come back in two weeks for their hearing. Okay, thank you. Okay, what's next, John?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to recuse myself from this one.
Okay.
Okay. to FST for townhomes in landlot 516 of the 18th district.
I should have known better.
The property is located on the southeast side of Blair's Bridge Road, northeast side of Riverside Parkway, east of the intersection of Blair's Bridge Road and Riverside Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in person opposing rezoning case Z1?
No.
Let the record show there's no one here in person opposing Z1. We do have three people, Mr. Chairman and Board, signed up virtually opposed, and three people who wish to speak. So at this point, we'll have the applicant make their presentation, and then we hear from the opposition.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, with that, go ahead when you're ready, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. My name is Kevin Moore. I'm here on behalf of Curly Family Homes in this application for rezoning. This property is 10 and a half acres. It's located almost at the intersection of Blair's Bridge Road and Riverside Parkway. What you're seeing on your screen is the property that's in the center. It's designated as GC, General Commercial. The entirety of this property is zone General Commercial. You'll see kind of in the, almost in the center is that intersection of Riverside, which kind of runs, you know, from north to south with Blair's Bridge running east to west at that intersection. That's also zone GC, and that is an existing gas convenience store that is located at the actual intersection. This property is surrounded by RM8, Townhomes, eight units per acre, PRD subdivision called Silverton subdivision, as well as other PRD subdivisions, RM12, which is an apartment, is also across Riverside. And then as you go further west, you enter into industrial and much more intense commercial activity areas. What's important about this property in particular is it's had even a more diverse history from a land use plan standpoint. Obviously, it's zone General Commercial and has been for some time. It's undeveloped. At one point, this property was viewed as for potential commercial, and it was designated as neighborhood activity center on the future land use plan, but then that evolved, and ultimately it is now designated as medium density residential on the land use plan, which would encourage or project future development up to five units per acre. This particular property, you have seen it before. Last year, about this same time, this property came in with an application, the same 10 and a half acres, came in as an application for 82 townhomes, just under eight units per acre for this location. It was held, and there was a lot of discussion with direction from this planning commission at that point in time to bring back a proposal that was within the future land use plan of five units per acre or less. At that point in time, the application was withdrawn without prejudice. They could not make those economics work at that time, but later in the year, in this past fall, Curly Family Homes, which is also a local family owned and operated and run home builder here in Cobb County and surrounding metro area, does an excellent job with single family and townhome projects, was able to place this property under contract, now brings this property in for rezoning to the fee simple townhome category for a townhome community at this location, as you can see on the site plan, but for a total of 51 homes, which is 4.8 units per acre, so a significant reduction in what had been proposed just earlier last year. Sometimes the economics can work when they're changed, and the parties can see that, and that's what's happened here. So what we are proposing now is a townhome development by Curly Family Homes. You see on your site plan the maximum of 51 townhomes. I want to point out along the right-hand side of this site plan, that is the portion of this property that is adjacent to Silverton subdivision, we have proposed a minimum 20-foot landscape buffer designated as such, so that it will comply with Cobb County code and development standards for such a buffer, which means it has to have 100% visual screening. In addition, that has a 40-foot setback to that side. We also continue that 20-foot landscape buffer and 40-foot setback to the north with the adjacent townhomes. There is a portion of this property that extends all the way up to Blair's Bridge Road, and you see we've left that area basically undisturbed. There is some topography there, but we're better just leaving it completely undisturbed adjacent to the existing townhomes, and therefore it will be that way in perpetuity. This project does have a mandatory homeowners association. We have a stipulation letter that was dated January 27th that was submitted, so there is a mandatory homeowners association for this proposed new community. In addition, as part of that mandatory homeowners association, it will have ownership of all common area, which would include the buffer areas that we described, the landscape buffer areas, as long as all the frontage areas, and the remainder of the common areas will be under the control and maintenance obligations for that mandatory homeowners association. We have on yesterday, after some discussions that had occurred, had entered into and supplied this planning commission with additional stipulations. These are supplementary, they came in yesterday, but we felt it better than simply to discuss them today. At least we'd have those in writing to be submitted for your consideration. We had received a phone call yesterday from a couple of different people that called me and expressed concern or an issue or request about a fence to separate the Silverton subdivision on our eastern side, and it was reached and agreed that a black chain link fence, black, you know, vinyl coated chain link fence, it would be a far better fence along with the landscape buffer, and so that is certainly agreeable along that property line. In addition, we have agreed that, you see, there's plenty of frontage along Riverside Parkway to go ahead and designate that area as a foot landscape enhancement strip, which will be heavily landscaped as part of our landscape plan. We have also agreed that the townhome community shall be for sale and included a rental restriction that will be a maximum of 10% of the units may be rented at any one time, and that restriction will be included in the declaration of covenants and enforced by the homeowners association. And we've also gone one step further, that we have prohibited the bulk sale of townhomes to institutional investors and entities, and those kind of play hand in glove so that you don't have institutional investors at any point in time, either initially or later. They'll be prohibited from, by zoning ordinance and by zoning stipulation and by covenant, from purchasing large blocks of townhomes or units here, and that's where the problem has occurred, is with those types of, with those types of arrangements that occur, and we are prohibiting that by stipulation. We've also designated that this, though a smaller, though a smaller community, will have a community gathering area, pavilion, or similar type of community structure that will be a part of this plan and included within the plan for them. These, we believe, are just simply additional stipulations that add some further context and color, but also are ones that have been requested of us. And we've also reviewed the Cobb DOT comments. There were a number of comments that Cobb DOT had made, while all but one are agreeable to us. The one that's not, I just don't know that DOT really looked at at this aspect, but they had requested that we provide a pedestrian walkway or path through the undisturbed area to Blair's Bridge Road, because there is, that's on the top of your site plan, there is a bus stop there, which would make sense if, other than the topo and the undisturbed area that is there, to create that path as such, it would also have to comply with ADA requirements, and so you're talking about a lot more, a lot more disturbance there than simply creating a nice walking path. Once we have to do that, it's designated as such for that purpose, it would have to be a lot more disturbance than we think's necessary, given that you can walk out the entrance onto a sidewalk on Riverside Parkway and simply go around a very short distance. And so we don't think the benefit is worth the cost of disturbance through that area to comply with that, and so we'd ask that we not be subject to that comment. DOT also had a comment about aligning our entrance with the entrance to the subdivision that's across the street and/or creating a bigger offset, and we're obviously agreeable to that. It may result in, it would result in obviously a small change or design change in the plan itself in the event that that cost us, or there was a loss of a unit or two to accomplish that. We understand that. There's a maximum of 51 homes here, and we're seeking approval of a rezoning we think is extremely reasonable, and it's one that is completely consistent with the land use plan designation, and more importantly, completely consistent with the direction this property was given simply really a year ago in February and March of 2020. I also want to conclude with showing you the elevations of the townhomes that we have included as part of our stipulation letter so that you can see the style and quality that Curly Family Homes would bring to this site. We think these are outstanding examples and are included as part of our stipulations. Again, we think this will be another excellent addition to this community, which has not seen what I call new residential development in probably 10 to 15 years or more. There's some nice neighborhoods, and this would be another addition to that residential community. With that, with respect, I request your recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Now we'll hear from the opposition.
Participants in opposition, the first one is Chandra Gaisser. Chandra, you are unmuted.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Excuse me for a little bit of my ignorance. I just wanted to have, I just had a couple of questions. I just wanted to find out why this specific empty lot was targeted instead of the one that's further, that's closer to I-20, since they tore down that apartment building.
Okay, and go ahead and tell us what you want us to hear, then we'll, afterward, I'll respond to it.
Okay, and another thing I'm not familiar with, I'm not familiar with what the detention facility is. I'm not sure exactly what that is. And I think he already answered one question as far as the rental. He said it was going to be 10%, I believe, and is that also, is that area going to cause a major problem? I don't know how many bedrooms are going to be in the townhouses. Are we now going to overload the schooling with more students? I know some of the schools are already on overload. Those are just a couple of my questions. Thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess we'll have the next speaker.
The next speaker is Vanessa Whitehead. Vanessa, you are unmuted.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you. My name is Vanessa Whitehead. I'm a resident at Blair Bridge condominiums, which is one of the adjoining properties, and I had a few questions as well as concerns, so just saying thank you for the opportunity. And also, I attended the hearing last year when this property was presented, I believe, by another applicant, and I opposed it, and I do see that two of my main concerns were addressed in this new plan, the reduction of the number of homes and the undisturbed area. Those were two concerns I had then, so I appreciate that change being shown here. Right now, my concerns are, the first one is traffic. I'm still concerned about traffic because I believe this area is pretty dense, and there's a lot of developments. a lot of developments and apartment buildings throughout the whole strip of Riverside Drive and Blair Bridge Road along with private homes, so I'm still a little bit concerned about that. Also seeing that at that intersection of Riverside and Blair Bridge Road, that four-way stop, that really gets backed up already when there's something going on on 20 and people take a detour, so that's a concern. The other point is guest parking. I don't see on the site plan if there's any designated area for guest parking and that's a concern of mine because we have that issue at Blair's Bridge Road. There was no guest parking a part of the plan and parking really gets crazy. The streets, the two roads in my development are pretty small, so people just park all kinds of ways and it makes it difficult for delivery trucks and other folks and also sometimes coming out of your driveway when people are parked right across from your driveway, so that's a major concern. The other thing is, there's a three-quarter circle that's across from the retention facility, like on the other opposite side on the site plan. I wanted to know what that was, the far side of the site plan, that was a question. And also, the attorney mentioned the walking path, questions about a walking path to Blair Bridge Road and I would totally be opposed to that because already, I live on the side closest to Blair Bridge Road and already because of that bus stop, there's a lot of trash that blows multiple times a week into our development. We're constantly picking up trash and I feel like if there's a walking path created through that undisturbed area, that it would just create even more problems with possibly trash, which would eventually flow back into Blair Bridge Condominiums. So, that's a major concern for me. And you answered two of the other questions. The property will be managed by HOA and there's a rental restriction, so I was concerned about that. And I also would like to know what is meant by the detention facility. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear from the next speaker.
Our final speaker is Antoinette McNear, right? Antoinette, you are unmuted.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. My main concern is detailed in the letter that I sent to you, the zoning board and the Board of Commissioners and it would serve us if I just read it. First of all, my home is located adjacent to the property and Forest Street in question. When my husband and I bought the property in 1997, the realtor told us that they could not build in the forest behind my home. So, what he meant was that the county could not build unless they changed the zoning. That's the reason we are here. We oppose this rezoning because this area would become somewhat what I call a travesty of justice because the forest is currently a sanctuary and a home for rabbits, deer, beavers, because of the waters that's surrounding us, chipmunks, as well as other small animals. It's been a quiet retreat for my family and I for over 26, almost 26 years. We have utilized our backyard as a place to get away. It has served as a place to meditate, cook out, bask in the sun, play area for our children, grandchildren, and pets. I've walked our dogs every day for almost 25 years in this neighborhood. I have experienced moments of peace and tranquility while becoming one with nature when I walk. However, it has become a bit disturbing lately as we've had to walk through and around broken glass, discarded food, and signage, as well as other kinds of trash thrown about in the area and that's really, really bad. But we do have associations to keep our area clean and they come out and bag the trash weekly or biweekly or whenever we can get people out. It's bad and a bit scary because it's been my neighborhood for almost 25 years, but I now worry that my dog might get cut from a piece of broken glass. There have been lots of broken beer and wine bottles thrown about, I assume at night from cars. I also worry that someone someday may decide to throw a bottle at us as we walk. The traffic has progressively gotten worse over the years. The county changed the name from Six Flags Drive to Riverside Parkway a few years ago. The amount of automobile speeders, trucks, buses have increased and it seems as if they would run up on the sidewalks as I walk up and down the parkway. The cars and buses have run up on sidewalks and into fences that border each of the subdivisions along the parkway, I assume because the parkway is a long winding road. If they build new townhouses in this area, it could be devastating to pedestrians, drivers, and animal habitats. I implore you not to approve of the rezoning. I do not want or need it in our neighborhood. Also, I wonder if we can know more about the detention facility, which I assume is a water retention facility that's built for every new subdivision and that's to keep the water runoff. I'm concerned about.
We may have lost the speaker. Okay, okay, I think that's most all the items that she had in her.
Erosion.
Okay, if you're still there, go ahead. Having a little technical difficulties.
I didn't hear, oh, did you hear my name?
You were talking about detention last time we really heard you clearly. You mentioned erosion, but we didn't really hear what you had to say about that.
Because I'm simultaneously teaching a class online, but I'm on a break with some of the children, not talking. I apologize for that. So, the water, the water erosion has been a concern for many subdivisions that are concerned about new subdivisions coming in the area and sometimes there's been neglect where that's concerning. And my situation is such that I never thought that they would even build back there, but they did build like the little cell station and commerce area, like there's a restaurant and a wash house facility. But I walk my dogs up there and there's a lot of trash thrown on the ground and there, I guess they're cleaning, people doesn't come regularly and there's trees that's falling from storms, they haven't picked that up. There's garbage receptacle that's left wide open, it's a eyesore and I've written the county about it, the code or whatever, people that come out and talk to them, they send them letters and it's just picked up for a moment, but it's an eyesore where it used to be all woods, like it's all woods now and they want to build townhomes, whereas, you know, I oppose basically because the area has been redlined and it's a lot of mixed incomes and it's a lot of people with different priorities. My own subdivision has had a lot of rentals come in and out and honestly, it's become a real job trying to maintain and keep it nice. We have the smallest subdivision of all the tourney homes that were built along Riverside Parkway and therefore we are the nicest one, in my opinion. We have an active homeowners' association and that's the reason why I believe it's still nice. But the problem with traffic and 51 homes and we haven't seen one rendition of what the homes will look like, if it's anything that's in the area is going to be very common and I'm concerned that the property values will go down because of the resale value, like the last people that talked about the other subdivision in Mabelton. They spoke about the reselling value of units in the middle and so forth and so on. And I'm just concerned about the area being compromised.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all your comments. With that, I see we've run out of time and I think out of speakers who will close the public comment portion and there was a lot covered by the three speakers.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
There was a lady here who wanted to speak in opposition. She asked me about it, there was some confusion, a language barrier about the agenda, but she is not here.
Okay.
I just want for the record that there was a lady here who was in person, but I do not see her.
Okay, okay, so, you know, that's hopefully it's somebody that attended our community zoning because informal meeting that we had, we had a lot of people participate in that and give us a lot of comments as well and hopefully that person who is here in person will come back for the Board of Commissioners when it's there and honestly, I think we're probably headed to having it back here next month as well. But, you know, with a few things there, there was a lot covered by the various people in opposition. I think I'll ask Kevin if he wants to respond to any of those, you know, and try and clarify some of the situations and provide them answers.
Certainly, they had a number of questions and I'll just go through the questions and that way they've at least got answers from us on that.
Sure, that'd be great.
Certainly. You know, a number of speakers asked about the detention for this project. If we can go back, I'll at least put up the site plan, but the detention facility is a requirement by Cobb County, Cobb County Stormwater Division and the development standards to provide for detention. Any development now is required to have that. Where our detention is located is the low point of this property, so that is a stormwater management facility. Detention facility means that when rainwater hits this property, all of the rainwater that hits this property must go into that detention facility. It can, is then engineered so that it only holds water over a period of 24 hours. It doesn't keep water in it, it must drain out within 24 hours. That's controlled by the engineering and the structures that they place. It will drain into an established drainage channel, an established location there in Riverside Parkway and then goes down, continues downhill from there. A personal, a potential note for those who live adjacent to this property in Silverton currently, rainwater and water when it storms hits this undeveloped property and sheet flows wherever it's downhill from there. Sometimes that means in specific, specifically here, they probably do receive flows across their yards today. In the future, under a developed condition, they will not receive that same water any longer. It all has to go to the detention. We cannot have off-site flows that do not go to the detention. By rule and regulation enforced by Cobb County Stormwater Division, goes into detention facility and then leaves our property without ever crossing into theirs. So, that's what that facility does. It's a requirement, has not always been a requirement, it's been a requirement for about 20 years or so. So, if you have a subdivision or development that was built prior to that, it was not necessarily required, but now is a part of those requirements and is necessary. We also had a question about guest parking and I'm sure she was not, Ms. Whitehead was not able to see that on probably the small version of the plan that she potentially was looking at, but we have provided guest parking in accordance with the standards for Cobb County and that is we have to, for this project, we have to have a minimum of 26 and we do have 26 guest parking places that are located outside of driveways and those are designated guest parking spaces that are distributed throughout the development. They're shown as, a good number of them, all of them are shown as parallel spaces because these are public streets, unlike the condominium development at eight units per acre that she lives in. So, these are guest parking spaces that are distributed throughout our development. She was not able to see those. You know, just a note about this property and a bit of education, hopefully, I know that you know this, but this property is zoned general commercial and it's within a medium density residential land use designation. As a result, Cobb County's ordinances do not allow this property to be developed without coming in for rezoning and that rezoning consistent with the future land use plan designation. So, that's what occurs under Cobb County ordinance, but what that means from our perspective is that the county now has an obligation to zone it to a category that an owner can use. Can't zone it, can't deny it simply. You've got to put it in some category that the property can be used or else it ends up being a complete taking of the property, which is not what the county's interested in, is purchasing this property right now. So, it, from the way the ordinance reads, the county is to rezone this property consistent with the land use plan and that's the proposal that's now in front of you, is to rezone it consistent with the land use plan of medium density residential. And I do agree with Ms. Whitehead about the walking path and I think just to make sure she heard that we were not agreeable to that either, we think that's a bad idea, as does she. With that, I think I answered the questions I could that were highlighted, at least that I'm able to.
Okay, and I may, if you bear with me for a moment, just make a few comments to try and answer a little bit of those. One question was why this lot, not the property down the street at Factory Shoals and Riverside Parkway area, which is owned by South Coberry Development Authority and they are actively marketing that property as well, but, you know, basically any owner has a right to develop their property, so we can't say, well, we don't want you to develop yours, we want you to go down the street. You know, Georgia's pretty strong on property owner rights and the right to get a use out of your property. I think you covered the detention fairly well. One was a question on the rental limit and you have it agreed to 10% rental limit. There was, you know, concerns about traffic. We always hear concerns about traffic and in a couple of minutes I'll have Amy Diaz come up, but not quite yet. We'll talk about that a little bit. The guest parking, you know, when Blair's Bridge Condominiums there were built, the county probably didn't have a strong guest parking requirement. In the years that I've been on this planning commission, we've had, you know, a number of changes to that. Now, they're currently required to provide one guest parking spot for every two units, which in this case, doing the math, works out to 26 and they're on the plan as parallel parking spots, which makes the road wider. So, it's not like they're just painting them on the exact same width of road, they actually have to make extra space for that. But, you know, it's not only an issue for the people who live there, it's also an issue for our emergency services, which is getting a fire truck through or an ambulance or things like that. You know, as Cobb County grew, they found that it was creating a problem and have addressed Kevin, there was a question about the kind of three-quarter circle by the detention area on the site plan, you know, just almost a bump out there. Is there a reason why it's not just a curve versus?
There is. These are public streets, so they're designed to comply with public street DOT standards. So, you have that, almost like a half cul-de-sac stand, that's just simply to meet DOT standards. The curve there, if you curve that road as opposed to have the little, look at it as a bubble or a half a cul-de-sac there, that, the curvature of that road wouldn't comply with DOT radius and curve lines, so that's why.
Okay, I think that addresses that. We talked about the walking path.
Say that right, Amy.
There is some, okay, Ms. Wright said, you know, that her realtor had told her that the property couldn't be developed unless they came for rezoning and that is in fact true, but as Mr. Moore just- But as, uh, Mr. Moore just said, you know, the county has to allow the owner to have an economic use of their property. We can't say you can't develop your property. Uh, so that's there, and, and we realize there's, there's wildlife in there and that. There was wildlife on all of this property, including where, you know, the Silverton subdivision is and the Blair Bridge condominiums were at one time. Uh, that's just progress, or, or maybe some people don't call it progress in, in the big metropolitan areas. Uh, now, one of the things that, that the developer has agreed to, because there was concern about their backyards being their sanctuary, one of the things that the developer, you know, put in their plan is a 20-foot landscape buffer to the Silverton subdivision, which is twice as large as are required to put by county ordinance. So that should provide some real protection, and, and, you know, once that matures, you'll have a very hard time seeing through, uh, there. So, so I think you'll still be able to use your backyard as your sanctuary. You know, the, the other thing is, unfortunately, you, you've, you've had a nice 20-some-year run of, of having that nice, nobody behind you, you know, piece of property, but, you know, the, the owners of the property want to get some value out of their property now, and, and they have a right to do that. Uh, you know, you, you mentioned a lot of the trash and that, and I, I assume you were referring to down Riverside Parkway and not necessarily within, you know, the Silverton subdivision. And I'll just say, it's absolutely an issue that the county's trying to address. There was just a, uh, article about trash and that in the newspaper, not exactly to this point, but I think it would help get to the point, so there may be some changes coming. The other thing is, call Keep Cobb Beautiful. Monica Delancey organizes cleanups on Riverside Parkway all the time. She always could use more volunteers, and that's coordinated through Keep Cobb Beautiful, so give them a call. Uh, erosion, you know, that's really, you know, the county has a lot of standards on erosion, and, and the detention pond helps that as well, so you can't just, the big reason for the detention plot, pond is to release the water off the site once it's developed no faster than it was being released off the site when it was undeveloped, so that it doesn't cause erosion and flooding and, and all those kind of things. And, and we have a great team of stormwater engineers that review all the plans and approve plans that, that developers bring forward. And, you know, those, those standards keep evolving and getting better all the time, and I think they're pretty darn good now. Uh, you know, we, you know, there was some concern that, that, uh, this area's being maybe targeted in that question, and, and I can tell you, we get town home developments all over the county, all the time. I don't know how many we do a year, but we do a lot. And they're spread in every district and that. And during the presentation earlier, there was, you know, what the homes would look like. You know, I also encourage you to maybe reach out to Mr. Moore, and he can send you what we call the renderings of, of the units, but they, you know, appear to be pretty nice. They're, I believe, 28 feet wide. In fact, I think he's going to throw them back up on the screen right now for, for people to see. Uh, this is not a, what I would call an entry-level town home. This is, you know, we, we often see them, you know, smaller and narrower. Uh, so I think, you know, from that regard, this is probably, you know, a product that, that I think people will be pleased with once it's built. Uh, I think I've covered most everything. I'm going to ask Amy Diaz to come up, and we'll talk a little bit about traffic and that. Thank you, Amy. And I know, on this particular case, with the number of units, it doesn't meet the threshold required for a traffic study, but we fortunately last year had, uh, a zoning application on this that went over the threshold, threshold, so we have a very recent traffic study in this area.
Correct.
And kind of tell us what the traffic study shows and, and that.
Okay. Well, um, to, to address how much it changed between the two developments, I, I just did the calculation, and it's a 38% reduction in trips. So the traffic study that I'm going to talk about is conservative, because it was based on the previous 84, I believe, units. So what we had was, um, the Riverside Parkway at Blair Bridge Road is an always stop, as I believe one of the speakers noted. Um, it does experience delay on some of the approaches in both peak periods, especially in the PM peak period. For the previous study, the, the development added between one and eight seconds of delay per approach, so there was a noticeable effect, but it was not particularly significant. So it will be a little bit longer from the additional traffic. Now, this, this development, of course, has reduced that by the 38% that I just mentioned, so it'll have that much less.
Okay. So hopefully we'll be down to a fraction of a second.
Yeah. Um, this location has been identified as a potential for a future roundabout project, but there is no, um, planned project or new funding associated with that, but it has been noted by our tra- traffic ops department.
Okay. Okay. And that now, I know at the last hearing, we didn't hear so much this time, but about, you know, speeding and that down Riverside Parkway and, and that, and there's not, obviously we don't like people going way faster than the speed limit, uh, but that would be more a law enforcement issue. I don't, there aren't any plans that you know of in DOT to, to make any changes that would?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Um, they, they can request, uh, that a speed trailer be put out there, so that the speeds that are actually being done could be measured. So that's, uh, they make that request through our traffic operations department.
Okay. That, and that may be a great thing for the neighbors out there to request, so that we can see some of the speeds. I can tell you, I drive on this road regularly, and I've been, had people pass in the center lane doing 70, 80, 90 miles an hour. Uh, so I get that traffic's an issue there and, and that, but, but the volume of traffic's not as much of an issue. If it was, they wouldn't be able to go those speeds.
Correct.
So, okay.
And as, as somebody mentioned, this can get congested when there's incidents on the adjacent interstate, but we don't design to that, so we just accept that as something that, that happens.
Right, right. And, and I'll just say, all your nice, various mapping apps give people this shortcut that people didn't really realize existed between I-20 and Thornton Road before. So, over the years, there's definitely been a big increase in traffic, where people are trying to get around that backup on I-20, so. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
One.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
The, the, I could have asked this of Kevin, but I'll ask you since you're here. Uh, the, the plan shows a, a circle or turn, uh, right at the bound, at the northern boundary of the, of the lot?
Yes.
And it shows a line going over the boundary line. I assume that line is just a setback line. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
I believe so. I mean, the, the right-of-way line should be within their property.
Are we able to get that up? I just want to make sure.
The site plan again. And actually, I appreciate you stopping me, because once you get done, I forgot I had just questions on the site plan for Amy.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that that is the setback, yes. Kevin's confirmed it.
Okay. Uh, to, to your knowledge, that's fine? The way it's, the way it's drawn and shown is fine?
Yeah, the, the setback doesn't affect it. Um, what we, what we need is that you kind of see the pale external line outside the, the ring of, um, bushes. That's the right-of-way line, and that would be what we would be concerned with.
So you're fine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
The, the final design of that cul-de-sac might be altered a little bit. It is what he references a bubble cul-de-sac, and so it, it may have some fine tuning in plan review.
Okay. And then there's some other issues that we've discussed on the site plan, the, the biggest one being the entrance and where it's located and how it's offset to Ambercrest right across the street.
Yes. Kevin mentioned today that they're, they're amenable to either putting it directly aligned with Ambercrest or doing the 125-foot offset, so that, that works with us. The only other thing I would mention is that they are going to lose a couple of the, um, guest parking spaces when they go through plan review because of the proximity of those spaces to Riverside, so.
Okay. And, let's see, so, so we need to address the guest parking, because we've got to get the number up to what it's required to be, so...
Right. You need to have them 50 feet from any intersection, and since those are public roads, it needs to happen internal as well as to the Riverside.
Right. Right. And we need all the right-of-ways to be 50 feet, and we need sidewalks, since they're public roads as well.
Sidewalk only has to be on one side within the development.
Right. And just, and maybe they're here and it's at this level, you can't see them, but I don't see sidewalks, uh, so I want to make sure we get sidewalks as well. Okay. I think that's all from DOT.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Amy. Appreciate it. And I think we've fairly well covered, uh, all the questions and that. You know, the big thing that we get to is, I think the site plan needs more tweaking, uh, because the entrance just can't be where it's located, and that's going to cause a significant change to the site plan. And then there's the, some of the parking spots are too close to the intersection. Some of the individual driveways are too close to intersections as well. Uh, so, you know, I, I think the concept of town homes is probably the right thing for this parcel. I know some of the neighbors would like to see it stay undeveloped, but we really don't have that choice. And given the, the size, shape, and topography, it's not, you know, good potential for, for individual detached homes. Uh, so I think town homes makes the most sense here, but I think we've got to get the plan right and tweaked, and, and I guess is we'll probably lose a few units getting that done. Uh, but, you know, we have to address those, those items, I think, before we move it on, so I'm going to make a motion that we hold this until our March hearing and ask for a revised site plan. Second from Alice. Any further discussion?
Just briefly.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say a couple things for the record. First, I, I thought it was interesting that I, I brought up, uh, with a previous applicant, the concept of putting some restrictions on there to prevent investor ownership, and I don't know if it's an issue in this area or not, but I've been told by various realtors in this county right now that, that, uh, a lot of rental, potential rental units are are very hot properties right now and are selling at massive premiums to what one might expect in a market where the, the abundance of low-interest loans were not out there. So, uh, I appreciate what this developer did in coming forward with a concept to, designed to prevent institutional investors, and I would ask that they also consider the possibility of, uh, something, if it can be legally done along the lines I suggested, to, to require the initial purchaser or an immediate family member to occupy the unit initially, to keep it, uh, an absolute minimum of, uh, of renters, uh, initially. That's my first comment. I, I want to, I, I just want to say to the folks that, uh, are complaining because they're, they're going to lose some woods, uh, I hope you'll appreciate two things. Number one, that there's going to be, um, an area out there that will stay wooded, as, as discussed by the attorney for the applicant. And then second, that your planning commissioner for this area has worked hard and, uh, essentially rejected or requested that a, a prior more dense use go away, and, and, and looked for an opportunity like this to get something that's less intense, and, uh, I point out also that behind my house, when my kids were growing up, we had a, a number of acres of woods, and, uh, another, Mr. Moore's clients has now built some houses back there, but part of what I got out of that deal was, uh, I, I now have a little bit of a view of Kennesaw Mountain, because some trees are gone. Uh, perhaps, I've heard some people talking about walking dogs, perhaps this will be a place where they, they enjoy walking dogs in the future, and that's, it's a, it, there's something positive to be gained from it. And, uh, if, if nothing else, though, you, you at least have a couple of things. You've, you've, uh, one, one of the opponents who spoke today, spoke previously, or spoke about having previously opposed to more intense use, and they, I hope they're at least heartened by the fact that this will, uh, in conjunction with the, the work of the applicant and the work of the, uh, planning commissioner for this district, will result in a less intense use than somebody, somebody else had in mind a year ago. So it's a, seems to be a good compromise, and, uh, appreciate all the hard work folks have put in to date. Uh, look forward to seeing a revised plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred, and thanks for the kind words. Anything else? Okay, with that, we'll call a question, all in favor of the motion. And that carries three to zero with Tony recused. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. And with that, we're going to take a quick, maybe 10-minute break, and then we'll come back to, uh, finish up our agenda. And then we'll come back to finish up our agenda. Well, welcome back from our break. We just have a few more items on our agenda that we'll finish up. And then we'll be done for the day. So John, what's next on our agenda?
Yes, sir. Moving into land use permits. First one we're gonna hear right now is LUP 4, John Lay. Request a temporary land use permit to allow more adults and more vehicles than the code allows in land lots 155 and 156 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Ostel Circle, southeast of the intersection of Ostel Circle and Ostel Road. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant's present. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 4? Mr. Chairman, there's no one here in person opposed to LUP 4. There are six people who oppose it virtually. And of those six, two people want to speak in opposition. So at this point, we're gonna ask the applicant to come forward to present their case to the board.
Good morning. Can I take off my mask, because it fogged up my glasses?
You can. Yes. And I think we probably have some stuff, if you wanna wipe anything to be safe or anything.
I'm good. I'm a little bit nervous. I apologize for that. I think the reasons that this should be approved, and I believe you all may have a copy of this...
Just before you go, and give us your name for the record.
Oh, sure. John Lay.
Okay. Thank you, John.
And the property is eight bedrooms and four baths. The code allows one person for every 390 square feet. This house has 3,414 square feet. That allows for 8.75 people. All of our tenants have limited income. They're either paying child support and can't afford much else, or they're on social security or disability. The rent is $400 to $500 a month, including all their utilities, their internet access, their cable TV is in each room. They have established relationships in that area. Some of them, if they couldn't live with us, would be homeless. We maintain the house in a neat and clean manner. We maintain the lawn twice a month. We have a maid service that comes in once a month. And we have pest control quarterly. The property has new vinyl done with hung windows. When I say new, it's recent, not last year. But we've resided the house, we repaint it, we keep the shrubs trimmed, the lawn mowed. And there are 24 homes on that little half-circle. Thirteen of them, our owner occupied the other 11. Our rentals, so it's almost half and half. The Marietta Housing Authority is built next door to us, a 55-plus community, which may not have much impact, but they've got, you know, high density right there next door. They're also building a multifamily project across the street on Ostel Road. So I think what we're doing is kind of in line with what's happening. This is a quiet, affordable, safe, and convenient house, which has become a home. The tenants have little or no contact with any other family. Shared community housing, living alone is no longer affordable, but you still have to live somewhere independently. Creative living arrangements is better than living under a bridge. You're with other people, and if an emergency does arise, there's somebody there to call for help or to help you. Sharing homes is better than living alone. You have a kitchen to share, a den, a laundry room. But everyone has their own private bedroom that's locked. By sharing a home, our tenants are able to live indoors, eat healthy meals, and save money. And the social rewards of sharing a housing, our tenants are able to visit with each other. Sometimes they share a meal. Everyone knows it's a shared responsibility to keep the house clean and in good repair. We have a live-in manager that's on-site. He has a real job, but he's there most of the time. The home is quiet. No homes are currently for sale on our street. So we're having no impact on property values, no parties, no loud music, no overnight guests. It's really a quiet living arrangement for our tenants. So we would request that you allow us to have more than two unrelated adults live there.
Okay. Anything else you wanna tell us? You still have almost seven minutes. If there's anything else you wanna...
That's all I've got to present, unless you have any questions for me.
Not yet. We might get to that a little bit later. I guess then, if you're done, we'll hear from the opposition. I think there's two who wish to speak.
You have two virtual speakers. The first one is David Haley. David, you are unmuted.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for the time that you're giving me to oppose this. Again, my name is David Haley. I'm a property owner on Ostel Circle. And, you know, I think what Mr. Lay brings up is really irrelevant to the single-family dwelling zoning that's within this small community. Ostel Circle does consist of 24 single-family homes. And because of that, I don't think Mr. Lay's opinion that it doesn't affect property value is relevant. Because, you know, much as I'm hearing with future developments that have been discussed in this meeting, it appears that rental is an item of discussion and consideration and limitations in all the developments that are being discussed. Therefore, I think the same type of limitations and standards should adhere to this mature community. You know, owning a home in this area and driving down the road and seeing a single-family dwelling with eight or more cars parked in the driveway and in the street, it creates an issue to the community. Many times, the cars that are parked in the street are parked in the wrong direction, which causes issue. And, you know, as you're coming into the developments, and if there's any other cars coming, it's not an easy access area when cars are in the road. You know, with this being a mature community and lacking a homeowners association, we, as the homeowners in this community, really, our only reliance is upon code enforcement and on zoning standards to hold property owners accountable. And although this is a mature and older development, it sounds like, from most of the discussions that we're having with future developments in other areas, you know, we're talking about limiting institutional renters. We're talking about not allowing too many renters in these developments. Well, the same applies for a small community like this. You know, it's one thing to own a home and have it as a rental property and have one or two non-related people renting the home and keeping the home up. It's another thing to have eight unrelated people living in a single-family dwelling that is not a commercial property. I think that's what the major concern is with the homeowners. And for that reason, I strongly oppose approval of this and ask for consideration of the commission to deny this request for that reason.
Okay. Thank you, David. Let's hear from the next speaker.
Our next virtual speaker is Diane Eman. Diane, you are unmuted.
Are you there, Diane? If you're there, we can't hear you. Do you have your mic muted, maybe? Give her opportunity here.
I can communicate with her.
Okay.
And see if she answers.
She, it says she has a headphone. But I can suggest that.
Okay. If you can hear us, Diane, you may wanna...
I've gotten no response.
Call in.
She seems to be here, but...
I know Diane's somebody we hear regularly from in these zoning and land use matters in this area.
She's not responding to the chat.
Okay. She may have stepped away from her computer or something. So I think we're gonna have to close the public comment portion of the hearing at this point. I think we gave every opportunity we could and bring it back to this board. And this is in District 1, so Fred's handling this case.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the, and I understand you don't have to come up. You could just nod from where you are. My understanding is there are currently a total of five people living in this house. Is that correct? Five unrelated persons?
Actually, six.
Six. Okay.
There's an eight-bedroom, four-bath house. And only five people have cars.
Go ahead and come back up. That way, you know, the whole audience listening virtually can hear it as well.
Excuse me. I said, sir. We only have six people that have cars. One of our customers or one of our tenants rides a bicycle, the other one rides the bus. So if there were ever eight cars there, it's because somebody had company for a short period of time. We don't allow any overnight guests. I understand that people parking on the street cause a problem, but that's not just on Ostel Circle. That's every subdivision you go in. Is there another question?
No. Thank you.
Okay.
You can have a seat again. So here in Cobb County, the Board of Commissioners, one of the things they do in addition to making the final decision on zoning matters, in addition to making the final decision on our ordinances, they set policy in what they do. And we have a number of colleges here in Cobb County. And the Board has set a policy about not having more than two unrelated people in a house. That's a county policy. And there are good reasons for it. And the good reasons include not ending up with four or five unrelated college students in a house in an otherwise quiet neighborhood, making a lot of noise. My understanding is they can't set a different policy for unrelated 20-year-olds than they can have one policy for them and have a different one for unrelated 50-year-olds who are maybe less inclined to make quite as much noise. But I, we've had cases before come up where all the neighbors admitted they were, that the students were first-quality neighbors, were quiet, didn't cause a parking problem. And we still ruled that, or made the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that the policy be adhered to without exception. So that's been something where, over the course of my two years of serving on this board, we've been almost entirely uniform. The limited exceptions we provided were, that I can recall, were when somebody was in their final illness. So I'm very sorry about this, but that's the policy of the county, and there's good reason behind it. And our... And our rulings, our recommendations to date have been consistent with that and have supported the policy established by the Board of Commissioners. So my recommendation will be that we deny this. I understand that this is going to create a hardship for the people living there. One suggestion I have for you, and you're free to ignore it or take it, is I would assume an eight-bedroom house would have a lot of value compared to smaller homes. You may wish to consider selling this and buying two smaller ones and continue to try to rent to as many people as possible. But I'm genuinely sorry that this will create a hardship. We usually like to see these situations addressed and remedied within 45 days. My recommendation will be within 90 from final decision of the Board of Commissioners because you're going to have some folks that are going to have some trouble finding housing. But with that, that'll be my recommendation, that we deny the request, but give you 90 days from the date of final action by the Board of Commissioners if that final action is a denial of your request, within which to come into compliance with the county ordinance.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion? Okay. Second from Tony. Is there further discussion? Okay. I'll just add one item. One thing that we've been very consistent on with land use permits is not allowing the cars and parking to flow out into the streets or creating a situation where that's likely. And we see it here. We see on the county's GIS when the map was taken, there's a car parked down the street facing the wrong direction, as the speaker noted. You know, and, you know, we have different classifications for a reason because, you know, different people have a right to kind of choose if they want to be in a single-family area or if they want to be in a multifamily area and that. And, you know, if we, you know, just start allowing the multifamily or the single families to become essentially boarding houses, you know, that creates a whole nother issue throughout the county if that's, you know, the way the policy went. So with that, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion to recommend denial? Okay. And that carries four to zero. Okay. What's next on our agenda, John?
This thing's supposed to be back on the 16th of this month. Do I still need to come back on the 16th?
Yes, you do. That will be the Board of Commissioners' hearing, and they make the final decision. We only make recommendations to them, so you will need to come back on the 16th for their hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. LEP-7 Douglas Rohan requests a temporary land use permit to allow temporary occupancy of an RV in Land Lot 979 of the 16th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Nantucket Drive, west of Hidden Hollow Drive. Is the applicant present?
Not the one that's described on the... Sorry.
Okay.
We have an error up there.
Right.
Would you or Doug Rohan? Okay. Is anyone here opposed?
Okay. Let's see.
No. No word.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Board, there's no one here in person or virtually opposed to LEP-7. Any applicant is present?
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead and swear them in, and then...
Good morning. Doug Rohan, applicant. Here accompanied by my wife, Julia Rohan, also homeowner. I will remove my mask. We are sufficiently protected and far enough away.
Sure.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And we did meet Ms. Williams a few years back, dealing with some other zoning issues. And we extend our condolences to the Board and the county in this matter. For our application, it's a very simple request. We're going to do a very extensive remodel of our home, including essentially removing the entire back half of the house and extending a two-story addition onto our property. We love East Cobb. I've been a resident of Atlanta for 20 years. We've been a resident at this property for 15 years. I've been an attorney and driven around all of the state of Georgia and most of Atlanta, putting about 30,000 miles on my car. And there's no place I'd rather live than in this particular neighborhood. So rather than finding a McMansion that we see cropping up in some of the other spaces, we really love our neighbors, and we'd like to be able to maintain this property as our family continues to grow. Referencing the neighbors, I would specifically like to point out the number of neighbors whose signatures we received in this application consenting to this. Effectively, I found all but two of our neighbors who have visual reference to our house to sign off on this application. And I understand that there may be some objection at some point from the East Cobb Civic Association. That doesn't ruffle my feathers. Again, the reason why we love East Cobb is because there is a civic association that cares that somebody has applied to park an RV in front of their house for six months. So we welcome that discussion, and we're happy to make sure that we're answering the questions that the county may have. Specific questions have come up about the placement and why we're choosing this. Our front yard fronting on Nantucket Drive is practically the only flat space that we have in order to install this temporary RV, with the exception of our driveway, which is also flat. But the idea is that we're trying to use the driveway to keep it clear for the construction crews to park, to bring materials into and out of the property, as, again, that's the easiest access to the back. If you're facing the house to the right side, we're right up against the set aside. It's about a seven-foot slope from the back of the house to the front of the house. That would prove an engineering challenge for installing the RV there. Plus, that would put it much closer to our neighbor's property. Behind the house, again, first objection is that that's where the construction is going to take place. We do have an expansive area of wooded space behind that where we have created a plateau of sod at the top. But from the bottom of the driveway to the top of that plateau is about 20 feet, and I believe there are some engineering challenges in trying to get the RV installed up on that plateau. So from our perspective, we think it provides the greatest safety, as we'll be able to monitor the construction site, make sure that there's no theft or problems. From a traffic point, we believe leaving our driveway open allows the construction crew a more convenient place to park as opposed to our street. And we think that it would be the most effective ingress and egress for the construction crews. So for that reason, we would ask the county to go ahead and approve this temporary installation of the RV. It will be tied into the electric and sewer, so we won't be moving it constantly while it's on the property in and out. It'll be there. It'll be installed for the pendency of the construction. And I promise, with three teenage daughters, we will move that trailer and be out of there as quickly as humanly possible.
Okay. Thank you. Just double-check for the record. There's nobody in opposition?
No.
Not seen or hearing any. I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. And it's back to this board, and Tony Waybright's going to lead our discussion.
All right. Thank you. I'm surprised... Mr. Rohan, you can just raise your hand, yes or no, on this one. So East Cobb Civic Association did not send you a copy of their objection or anything?
They did not receive a copy. I've had three phone calls with them to answer their questions, but nothing.
Okay. Thank you. So we did receive an email with objections from East Cobb Civic Association, primarily on the aspect of creating a precedent of having the trailer sitting in the front yard so close to the road. They understood the applicant's issues and desires to, you know, be on the property. I'm assuming with daughters that obviously being closer to schools and things like that count as the school year winds up and starts again. So there was some understanding on that aspect, but I think the location remains an issue. It's good that, obviously, we have all the confirmation from the neighbors, that they kind of have some understanding of that. So it reduces us to the issue of location. Looking at GIS, there does seem to be some room on the driveway up close to the side of the house. And I know when we've talked about other similar situations, for instance, we had LUP-8 that was on the consent agenda, and that one was on the side of the house and had been there previously. So while the policy on that may not be as strong as what we've talked about relative to multiple unrelated adults, we do seem to have some precedent. And I'm certainly concerned about how that would be applied, not just here, but, you know, throughout the county. So I'd like to hear a little bit, perhaps, from some of you that have experienced these in your areas, in your districts of the county.
Okay. I'll just add that typically, the county... Well, I don't know of any that we've approved just because somebody wants to, you know, remodel their house. We have had one that I can recall that was approved where there had been a fire at the property, and it was an acreage lot, and they had animals that had to be cared for. And it would really create a hardship for them if they had to live elsewhere and constantly travel. The other thing is, it was a large enough tract that, really, the neighbors weren't really going to see it or know it was even there, really. You know, so it didn't really create any hardship for either the immediate neighbors or anybody just driving by. So the other ones that we've done have typically been for some kind of medical hardship, that it was needed. I can recall one where, you know, a brother was ill and had all kinds of disabilities and needed something. But once again, that one was also on an acreage lot and was very, very well screened. We actually had them move the trailer. They had proposed it closer to the road, and we had them move the site of that so that it wouldn't be so close to the road and where people would really see it. So that's kind of my perspective on it, that, you know, we usually require a real hardship and also that there be some screening and some, you know, ability where it's not going to be sitting right out in front just for anybody who drives by to see it. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, just since comments were solicited, otherwise I wouldn't have said anything in this case. But I would think, notwithstanding any consent given, that neighbors should not have to look into the side of an RV for a period of months. That if they wanted to put it at the end of the driveway and then put some sort of visual barrier, so it's concealed to a degree, that might be more appropriate. But my understanding was, at least initially, that the plan was to park it in front of the house, where folks would be looking into the side of an RV. In a nice residential neighborhood like this, I wouldn't think that would be appropriate.
I would also say that the county ordinance requires something like this to be parked on a hardened surface. So parking on the grass would be yet another violation of county ordinance.
So within this, you know, we understand the idea that you want to be in the home or be close to the home during the timeframe. As explained, we do have things that we've looked at in the past for precedence. LUP-8 that we mentioned, that was originally granted because the... One of the adults was going to have to have medical supervision and had to be close to the family, and the family had no other room in the house to be able to include that adult inside, so they were added outside. So I think everybody has a different idea or definition of hardship, but within the context that we've discussed, I'm not sure that this one meets that. And there may be a further compromise. It can be resolved on where it's located. But I think for purposes of this hearing, then my recommendation will be denial of the plan as presented and leave some room for discussion with the Board of Commissioners on how you move forward.
Do we have a second on that motion for denial? Okay. Second from Fred. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. Let's call the question. All those in favor of the motion for denial? And that carries four to zero. Okay. I believe that completes our zoning part of the agenda, but now we have some code amendments
Morning, everyone. We are back today with the amendments that you all asked to have come back to you. So the first, of course, is Section 134-290. This is the Ostel Road Design Overlay District. This is one where, as you'll recall, we were proposing, as a Commissioner's request, to codify the Ostel Road Design Guidelines. We had some great conversation about that at the last meeting, and I know that Jason Gaines has also had some further discussions with you all at the work session and sent on an email on Friday with our proposal. And what's being proposed, rather than putting the guidelines word-for-word in the code at this point, is to clarify in the code, first of all, that the underlying zoning is still in effect, the design guidelines. This overlay is just that. It's an overlay. In the case of a conflict between the overlay and the underlying zoning, the overlay would take precedence. There is, of course, the map of the overlay district is included in the code, an applicability section, and that's something I think is very important, is when do these guidelines, when do they apply? So that would specify that it's exterior rehab or modifications that require a permit. New construction signs would have to adhere to any guidelines, and also that single-family residential is exempt. And then it refers to the guidelines. And again, rather than having the guidelines word-for-word in the code, it makes reference that the design guidelines are on file with the Community Development Agency, the County Clerk's Office, and also available online. And then it outlines the process for changing the guidelines. Design guidelines wouldn't go through the full code amendment process as if it were actually in the code, but it would still be a process whereby if there was a design guideline that was appropriate or we were considering changes to, we would bring that forward to you all as the planning commission to make recommendation, and it would move forward to the Board of Commissioners to approve that change. And again, the code, as far as the code itself, it would still, if there were any changes to the applicability or to the district, any of those things, because those are actually written into the code, that would go through the full code amendment process that, of course, happens once a year. So Jason is on his way to another meeting, but I believe he's available on the phone, and, you know, he's listening in through WebEx. So if there's any questions that I can't answer, he can also, as the one who's worked on this extensively, I'm sure gives him good insight.
Okay. Good. So essentially, you're saying more or less scrap what we saw last month, where we were trying to pull the whole thing in and just reference those design guidelines. How does that, you know, maybe impact some of the things where we had concerns that when it's codified, it then becomes a requirement versus a guideline? You know, how does that give... Does that in some way give staff discretion in interpreting those? Maybe Brian wants to... Or from our county attorney's office wants to comment on that. But, you know, there were certain things that we had concerns about, just the language not being, you know, real precise for something that's a requirement versus something that was just a guideline before, that there was some wiggle room in before. So do you want to address that at all, Brian?
Well, I mean, I think a lot of it is in the discretion of this recommending body back to the Board of what to include in terms of the precise language in the guidelines. I don't think we should stall ourselves on the nuances of individual words or guidelines, you know, when it goes into the code. If I'm speaking to this... this, to the question presented, I mean, I, I think as presented, they're, they beat muster. I mean, they would pass. I mean, the, they're adequate and strong enough as they go forward. And I think that, that the guidelines themselves are merely guidelines. And once they go into code, it's just to, to denote that, that applies to a certain area. But I think at this juncture, that if, if they're, if this board desires to make additional changes, recommendations, they do so and pass them up for the Board of Commissioners to be able to consider at their meeting next week. And I believe that's when it's...
Right. So just to, to say a follow-up, Brian, because I, I think I see where the chairman's going with this. If, you know, there are some cases where something that's in the guideline might not work for every property. And with them as guidelines, staff has some flexibility to say, okay, you know, because it's not actually codified, you know, in this case that, you know, yes, it makes sense that this, it's not going to work, whatever guideline this isn't going to work on this particular property for whatever reason. And so we've got some flexibility there as a guideline to, to make some other alternative suggestions and what have you. If we're bringing this into code and saying, you know, that the design guidelines apply, but then we don't actually have the guidelines in the code, does staff still have that flexibility as there are the special circumstances that come up, something that's specific in the guidelines, in the guidelines, but not in the code, that we would be able to look at some alternatives? Does that make sense?
And I can maybe give you an, an example in the code here. There's one that says, "New buildings shall be constructed predominantly of brick in combination with a maximum of twenty-five percent stucco or similar materials." But you may have a case where you have the back of a shopping center that can't be seen from a road, can't be, there's no public parking, there's no, and it seems onerous to make them brick the whole back of a shopping center that nobody really sees except for, you know, delivery and, and that kind of thing. But, you know, if we, you know, before we've kind of said it's a guideline and, and, you know, we've adjusted, and we've adjusted during the zoning, which I guess could do. But if somebody doesn't have to come through zoning, then it may be coming to the BZA or something like that needlessly.
Well, I, I think in, in terms of applying the code, and especially when it comes, because this is under chapter 134, you know, each parcel is taken individually. Each situation is unique and that's why we have staff to review and, and offer guidance and advice. If it was of such a variance from the code, then certainly a BZA would be an opportunity to, to request something different than what the guidelines or the code is requesting. But, but I think that generally, you know, it's parcel by parcel. So there would be unique factors that apply for one that went into another necessarily. And I don't think that prohibits the code, the guideline or the codes for being adopted and implemented area-wide. I think, I would say that's the intent, but it just, it, it turns on the needs of each, each parcel or each, a unique situation that comes up.
Okay. Okay. I, I understand that, that portion after thinking about, I, I guess in my mind, we either need to, if we're going to put it in the code, which sounds like we're just going to reference it, we probably need to go back and tweak the language a little bit in the, in the guidelines, just to, to allow staff a little bit more flexibility because I don't want to have people just come into the BZA and taking two months and paying fees when, you know, it's something that staff could probably do with some common sense. You know, if the, if, if we have the flexibility in the, in the design guideline.
So perhaps, you know, considering adopting or recommending approval as, as it's put forward today, and then we could look at the design guidelines and build into there some language that says unless, you know, this, unless here's some circumstances that could specify in the design guidelines where staff has some opportunity to present other alternatives, we can bring that back to planning commission and Board of Commissioners for approval of the design guidelines themselves.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that makes, makes some sense. Okay. Well, let's see. We also had the sign ordinance.
Yes. Are you all ready to move on with that?
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll make our recommendations at that.
The next one, the sign ordinance, and there were two items in there. So we'll start with section 134 dash three twenty-one, and this is commercial and industrial zone properties. In our last meeting, the planning commission expressed some concern that the, while the forty-nine square feet that's currently in the code may not be enough to satisfy the needs of our businesses, the way that the code is spelled out right now, it essentially, it goes back to what the old code was, where it was one square, or two square feet per one linear foot of wall frontage. The difference being that the old square footage didn't, or the old code didn't have the cap on it. So we're saying here, there would be a cap of a hundred and fifty square feet for one and two-story buildings or a maximum of two hundred square feet for two stories, over two stories. What, what we've talked about, and I saw that Mr. Wabright had sent some thoughts on this yesterday evening, and I would say the way that we calculate and the, the way that the, you know, the formula, the square foot per linear foot is very typical. It's sort of an industry standard for how wall signage is calculated. And in talking with John today, I, I do see your concern with regard to perhaps two square feet per one linear foot is too much. A standard that you see in a lot of other jurisdictions is actually one square foot per linear foot. And I think if we're still sticking to that same basic formula for how we calculate it, the numbers we can adjust. And that way it keeps it simpler for staff and also for our sign companies who are working in jurisdictions all over the metro region to have some consistency there. So that's what I would recommend, is rather than doing two square feet per one linear foot, to say one square foot per linear foot and still keep the caps at one fifty and two hundred. I know that in the planning commission, there was a, or in the work session, there was an example of a target and some sign variances that were granted for a target. Well, based on the old code, that two square feet per linear foot, one of those signs could have been seven hundred and ninety square feet. Well, that tells us that, you know, that's a pretty big building. For a building that is two hundred feet long or that is, you know, over two hundred feet long, or with the wall itself, a two hundred square foot sign is not going to look out of scale. But, you know, if you have a fifty-foot-long tenant space or fifty-foot-wide tenant space, then it may be that, you know, a hundred-foot-square sign, a hundred-square-foot sign would look out of scale. So I think if we, rather than do two square feet per linear foot, one per one may make some more sense and get us closer to that goal that you all had.
Okay. Okay. Is that all you have on that?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll, we'll bring it back here for our discussion. And I asked Tony to kind of take the lead on this for us. I'm going to turn it over to him to...
All right, thank you.
On the sign, then I'll go back to the Ostel Road in a minute.
And we've got one other on the signs office. So if you all want to talk about this section, we can come back to the next section. You want to go ahead and do the other one?
Yes.
And the other one is 134 three twenty-two. And John talked to you all about this at the last work session. And based on the discussion at the work session, what we're proposing is to change the section heading from just non-residential uses on residential properties to non-residential uses on residential properties, comma, and apartment and subdivision signs. So that way it's clear that, kind of what the section is covering. So that's the only change that's being proposed there.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll turn it over to Tony to start the sign discussion and then I'll come back to the Ostel Road.
Okay. On the sign, we'll start with the second one first because it's probably the easiest. The difficulty is not the heading. And we've heard from several neighborhood associations, especially East Cobb, the concern is that the way that it is worded at the moment with residential subdivision signs in the introduction paragraph, and when you go to sub-paragraph B, that says electronic signs may be used in conjunction with any of these permitted freestanding signs, is that electronic signs could then be used on subdivision signs. And the request would be that really what we would want probably modify is that in sub-paragraph B, it would read, "Electronic signs may be utilized for and in conjunction with any freestanding signs permitted by this section except for residential subdivision signs." So residential subdivision signs would still be able to use indirect lighting as they currently do, or I guess technically could also be backlit. There are some that, that, that use that. But they would not be able to have an electronic, i.e. LED flashing sign. So that was, what we're trying to get modified is just to prevent the neighborhood signs from being LED signs.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be easier just to refer to the electronic sign section and just say electronic signs as permitted by whatever that subsection is that deals with those electronic signs?
Well, that's what, that's what this is, is that with the sub-paragraph B, which I think was highlighted in the, the attachment that I sent out.
Well, I think in that section, it, it wouldn't allow a subdivision to have an electronic sign in that subsection. Is that correct, either Jessica or John? I don't know that we want apartment complexes having them either, really.
It's not addressed there clearly, Chairman Porter, but I think Tony's suggestion for subsection B is fine.
Okay. Okay.
So would this be for both residential subdivisions as well as multifamily properties?
Yeah. And I, and I think it makes sense to add multifamily properties because sometimes their, their entrances aren't, you know, if they're residentially zoned. I guess it's, multifamily's a little trickier because they could be on a corridor where, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be a problem if they had an electronic sign, but they may be in a residential area where there's one. So...
I mean, the neighborhoods I've heard, I've heard from would obviously have no objection to that. They were just concerned about the neighborhood sign. So I have no objection to that either.
And John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I can't think of many instances where multifamily users have been seeking electronic signs. Typically, the non-residential uses in residential zones that like the electronic signs are going to be your schools and churches and those sorts of things. John, have you seen anything to the contrary?
Yeah. So why don't we just add multifamily to it? And if, if there's a case where they need it, they can come to the BZA, but I don't think we get those very often.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. And do you want to tackle the other section?
Sure, let's do the other section. So I think everyone was fine until, as you said, till we got down to the size. And I think one of the concerns is as we get into different corridors, be it the Ostel design guidelines, this came up in a previous, in a recent variance involving Atlanta Road and, and the design guidelines there, kind of the corridor guidelines. The concern is that as we get businesses that are still relatively close to the street front, that, that the size signs that we're talking about begin to dominate the streetscape. And in the discussion that we had, both in the work session and, and as we've swapped ideas around, is to come up with something that relates the size of the sign to the distance from the right-of-way. So that those who are closest to the right-of-way, for instance, a, a building that is as close, is within, say, the fifty-foot, you know, right at the fifty-foot setback, and may only have one row of parking and the, and the driveway in front of it, certainly doesn't need a sign as, as large as someone that's set further back. So that is sort of where we were trying to go with this. And while the distance that you're proposing using the linear square footage, you know, we can also see where a business would look at it and say, well, I only have a fifty-foot frontage in, in my portion of the shopping center, but my need for a sign is just as, as great as the business that has a sixty-five or seventy-foot frontage. So while there may be some consistency with other jurisdictions, I think perhaps our goal here is probably going to be closer to what fits best with Cobb as we are developing and, and redeveloping in, in certain areas. So with that, the proposal that has been discussed is that we have a maximum sign size based on the distance from the right-of-way. Now, if that could be included within what you're proposing, I think that's fine. I think we also feel that, that even at a hundred and fifty feet, that's, that's much too large as a maximum size for someone that's within, say, one hundred feet of the right-of-way. So that's where we're, I think, in our discussion, is trying to find something that manages that distance and helps to preserve the streetscape as we, as we work through some of our communities.
Well, me personally...
I've given you the staff recommendations, so...
Yeah. I could see possibly using the one foot per linear foot, or one square foot per linear foot, but also putting these other caps on so they aren't just quite as big as your caps when it gets close to the street, but maybe they're a little bit more generous as you get further from the street. So still, you know, almost a two-tier thing where first you got to meet you, one foot per, for linear foot. But if you're, you know, three hundred linear feet and you're fifty feet from the road, we don't want a hundred and fifty-foot sign, a hundred and fifty-square-foot sign, or three hundred-square-foot sign, I guess would be the math. I was doing that wrong. At one and one...
Would still be capped at three, two hundred square feet.
Yeah, or two hundred. We don't even necessarily want two hundred on something that close to the road.
Yeah. I think I'd really like for John, John's the group that, you know, his staff is one that works with us every day and implements this. So I'd love to hear his thoughts on the proposal.
You know, as, as far as what's proposed by the staff, you know, I think my staff would have the easiest time enforcing it, interpreting it, and customers would have the best chance of understanding it. You know, because out of all the zoning code, the sign code is the most confusing and hard to understand. Even though we reduced the sign code by half, a year and a half ago with the new sign code, it's still a hard read. So my drawl is would be not to have, in addition to the sign code where you, you get more or less signed based on how far the building is off the street. I think that would just be something more complicated to interpret. So what I want to stick with is what's in your printed code amendment package as far as the amount of signs that's permitted. You know, I think what's permitted is, is going to be scaled to the building it's on. It's not, it's not too much. And it's going to help reduce the number of variances we see on the variance board on a monthly basis. So the staff's rec would be just to stick with what's in the printed code amendment package.
And I would just add to what John's saying. I think also if we, if we base it on the distance from the right-of-way, essentially at that point, we're going to need, you know, somebody with a, you know, three thousand square foot tenant space in a shopping center to bring us a survey in addition to the sign plans and everything else. So we can see how far are you from the right-of-way? And I just, I don't know. I think it does become a little bit more cumbersome, but you all are the recommending body, so...
Okay. And I can see where that could be an issue. I don't know if there's a, a good way around it, if it could be measured.
And what Jessica's saying, you know, it's already hard enough to get them to give us the proper survey.
Right.
In addition to the survey, we would also need a, a vertical elevation of the building from the road and how it's, it's meeting or not meeting the code as far as how far it's set back and how, how high the sign is on the building. So I think the way it's worded currently in the staff proposal is the least complicated way to allow more signage, but not a whole lot more signage.
And your current wording, is that two square feet per linear or is it one?
Right now it's two square feet per linear, but I would propose changing that to one square foot per linear foot.
Okay. And do you think, John, that that would cause a lot of variances at one versus two?
Well, it, it's really not so much the two for one or one for one. It's the total square footage. So right now it's at forty-nine square feet and that's just, it's broken because it's not working.
Right.
So I think if we go to two hundred, even at one-to-one or two, two-to-one, you know, the two hundred is what's going to help the most out as far as the sign signage and the variances.
The one-to-one may help keep down the amount of larger signs that are close to the road. And they would come for, to the BZA probably, which I'm not wild about them doing, if they need a bigger sign once they get further back from the road.
I think with one-to-one, I mean, certainly there's more chance for variance requests at one-to-one than two-to-one. But, you know, your typical, in most cases in, you know, unincorporated Cobb, your buildings that have the really super-long building frontage or wall frontage are, are going to be those that are typically a little set back from the road because they've got much higher parking requirements. And, you know, your Targets, your Walmarts, your grocery stores, those sorts of things. And then some of the ones that are maybe going to be a little bit closer to the road, your gas stations, your, you know, some of the, you know, little shops and what have you, especially on some of the redeveloping corridors. And those are typically going to be smaller users. So at one-to-one, the sign is just, they wouldn't be able to have a huge sign because they're smaller spaces.
Right. And I'm always trying to think of like Cumberland where people are building things closer to the road now. You know, when we saw the... things closer to the road now, you know, when we saw the Cumberland Mall and the whole replan for that, there's a whole lot of things much closer to the road now than used to be in the mall. And, you know, and I think that's going to be a trend that will continue to have things closer to the road. It may still be within the setback, but before, the setback was irrelevant to them because they planned all the parking in front, and, you know, they only had setback 50 feet or something, and they setback 200 feet because that was their design, but that seems to be changing just in general anyway, you know, with shopping centers and that. So that's the concern with the distance back and forth. We don't want to necessarily penalize the people who are sitting way off the road, but we don't want these, you know, unbelievably large signs sitting right up on the road. And it's hard, but I can see the real issue and potential cost of having to get surveys and things if we require them to, you know, if it's by distance, they're going to have to document their distance. About the only way to properly document that's with a surveyor. So there you go, down $3,000 to get a sign, you know, to get the surveyor on a commercial property or whatever, whatever they run at and...
But is the survey, you wouldn't need the whole property surveyed, you would just need one laser measurement from the front of the building to the right-of-way.
Right, so yeah, maybe cheaper.
And honestly, I think on some of them, you know, the GIS measurement that we can do online, you know, if it measures 50 feet, then it's clearly inside of 100. If it measures 150, it's clearly between those two wider measurements, so we may only need a laser measurement, you know, when it appears to be right at one of the breakpoints.
Yeah, it's just, I know the GIS, depending on the angle, the picture was taken and all that, it's not real accurate, and I hate to put that on county staff to say, yeah, that's good, or that's not, or, you know.
And for us to be consistent and to know that we're truly being accurate, I mean, we would probably need to require a survey. And we even saw today a good example with one of the zoning cases where what was shown on the GIS didn't quite line up with the survey.
Right.
And you have those instances out there.
We have that on, you know, on an occasional basis. I don't want to make it sound like it's all the time, but, you know, there's older parcels that have been sitting around a long time, there often are, the way the tax assessor mapped it and the way the deeds really are don't always match.
And the right-of-way moves, they take additional right-of-way. I mean, there's, the right-of-way line's always changing, so.
Right, well, and the thing that you have on older deeds is sometimes the two deeds say different things. This neighbor and this neighbor's deeds each claim part of the same land, or there's a gap between the two of them, you know. So I understand, having worked with tax assessors and GIS systems and all that, I know how difficult that can be. I used to pull out plat maps when they were all paper and railroad tracks would go like this from one plat map to the next. And I was pretty confident that the trains didn't jump that far. So there are some issues, so I can see, I can see staff's point of view on the distance. Even though I really like the distance idea, I'm trying to think, are we putting an unreasonable burden on, you know, even the applicants to go out and pay for a survey, even if it's some lesser survey? You know, is...
And I see that, but I think what we were trying to accomplish was a way of having smaller signs closer to the road.
Right.
And that, so that would take us back to having a maximum-sized sign of 49 feet as opposed to, as opposed to a maximum of 150 feet. Certainly, when you look at shopping centers and mixed-use type developments, you can have a great variety of widths of what's, you know, frontage for particular businesses, and to create a situation where they would have that wide of a variance for their sign size, just because they have more frontage, yet they're all the same distance from the street or the sidewalk, just doesn't provide enough protection for the neighborhoods and the residents in those corridors. So I can't, I couldn't do anything approaching that size for minimum size.
Sure, go ahead, Fred.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to address other points or just the survey concern and the distance from the road concern, but I'll start with that. And what I would note is, in most cases where there's a commercial property, and in most cases where we have received a variance request for the past two-plus years, the building's already there, and there was a commercial closing and there's a survey already in existence. So I think this whole concern about the expense of surveys is completely overblown. They're out there. They're in every lender's file on almost every commercial deal. I know that surveys, it used to be a joke about surveys where, when surveys were typical in residential closings, that there are a lot of what people call drive-by surveys done maybe, where the surveyor maybe never got out of the car and just issued a cheap survey that wasn't really a legal survey. I don't think there's any kind of similar concern when it comes to commercial properties, and it's my understanding that the standard still is to have a survey for a commercial closing that's accepted by a title insurer. So I think they're out there. I don't think there's a great concern as to their existence or as to putting an undue burden or expense on the applicant. I think what we're trying to do is to create a series of guidelines that reduce the burdens overall on many applicants and on the aggregate of the whole applicant pool, so that there are fewer variance requests, but I do think we have to do it in a manner where we're not going to end up with a bunch of very large signs right up on the road.
Okay. Let me ask you this. Would staff have an issue if it was worded such that it can be measured from GIS, and then if the applicant wasn't satisfied with the GIS measurement, they could bring their own survey? So in other words, if it measured, you know, 49 feet and the applicant's saying, well, really, it's 52 feet, so we should get a larger sign, or whatever it is, they could go bring that survey, but that it would be relied upon that it could be measured on GIS because most of them aren't going to be a close call?
First of all, to Mr. Boylan's point about the availability of survey, and certainly for an applicant that's in a shopping center, absolutely, that should be easier, but if you have, you know, there are several standalone businesses, standalone buildings that maybe have been in existence for years and years and years, the likelihood that they're going to have a survey is going to be pretty slim. So I think that there are a number of property owners that would be impacted by that, but to your point, as far as, you know, whether or not we would be willing to accept the GIS measurement, I mean, we could, I just worry that that might open us up to problems if, you know, down the road, somebody says, well, you gave these guys one, and we gave it to them based on the GIS, but then, you know, we actually look at a survey and maybe it's not quite right after all.
Right.
You know, that could be problematic, but I think just overall, you know, just, John, I don't know if you have anything else to add, but I think that from the staff standpoint, it's just really starts to complicate things. If we were talking about, you know, in downtown areas and those types of activity centers, you're going to have a lot more of that type of development that's a lot closer to the road, and in an unincorporated area, I just, I don't think that what's being proposed is unreasonable, but I don't know if John has anything else to add.
My preference would be not to use the GIS. I mean, the GIS is an excellent generalized document to use when planning, but it's not accurate by feet, and many times by many feet. And, you know, when the county code says a sign has to be 52 feet, 62 feet or 42 feet from the center line, we need an accurate measurement, because if it's going by GIS, then the sign most likely is going to be built within the right-of-way at some portion, and that gives the county too much liability for us to accept. So it needs to be accurate for us to permit it.
Okay, I guess I was thinking in terms of shopping centers and things like that. Obviously, if it's going to be near the right-of-way, you need a survey to make sure it's not on the right-of-way.
Exactly, you know, if it's a matter of 50 feet within 100-foot area, that should be a problem using GIS, but when you're talking a few feet, we need to be accurate.
Yeah. Not trying to create big problems to administer here, but it's a back and forth.
I understand the way the staff recommendation is, stands, and we'll certainly take forth the planning commissioner's recommendation next week to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. If we can dice up and figure out exactly what we want it to be. Because I do have concern that it could be burdensome, and I'd like some way that... Can I speak to that, too?
Sure. Yeah, so when we bought our freestanding 25,000-square-foot building in 2003, we had a survey done. It didn't cost anything near $4,000 or $5,000. I think it cost less than $2,000, but it was a requirement of the title insurer, and we got it done. So we still have many copies of it. By comparison, when I went to build a retaining wall on my parking lot, I was told I had to have a survey done in my parking lot, which cost me more than that. So I'm not really concerned if somebody has to go get some limited survey for a limited purpose. I don't think it's going to cost in the multiples of thousands of dollars, and I think, I think we already require, and I know it's happened to me, that we already require various types of surveys in order to pull other permits. I don't see that as an undue burden. What I do see as a problem is that right now, we have too restrictive an ordinance, and we're talking about the extent to which we liberalize that and prevent folks from having to come in, so I'd rather do it in a manner that doesn't create a bigger problem than the one we fix.
Yeah, and on that, I guess at some point in time, if somebody can produce a document that says the frontage of their building is 50 feet or 75 feet, or the frontage of the parcel that they occupy in a shopping center is 50 or 75 feet, then if they can produce that measurement, we should be able to trust that they can produce the measurement from their building to the right-of-way. Somewhere that should all be on the same, on the same plan that was used when it was demised or when their building was constructed.
Yeah, because they already have to bring you something if we're doing one foot per linear foot.
Typically, they just run on the application, right, on the length of the building, and they show it on their picture, too, though, right?
They put it on their application, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, we're talking about two different things here. You know, when you're measuring on GIS, the left side of a building to the right side of a building, we know that's going to be pretty accurate, but when you talk about right-of-way, which property lines move, because who knows where they are, but we can actually see the building on GIS and measure it from any...
Okay. Yeah, and I do know, I know there's definitely an error factor on the mapping and getting it into GIS, and it comes down a lot of times to the angle that the map was actually shot at and all of those things, and it's all stuff that can make you pull your hair out. I see Brad over there from GIS shaking his head going, yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's, you know, so that's why I'm struggling with it just from a, I want to make sure that it's, whatever we propose is something that works, you know, for the staff to administer and for the public to apply for without being too burdensome. I guess on the other hand, if you have a building really close to the street, are you going to spend a fortune putting up this gigantic sign typically? Somebody will, but the average, 99% of them won't spend a fortune putting up a sign that's really way oversized for them, so I don't know. I'm struggling with it as to the best, to the best recommendation. I think the two of you are both on the distance still. Am I correct in assuming that? Okay, and so we have three of us on distance, so I guess we're going to give you a distance recommendation, because, you know, I'm struggling with it and three are there, so, you know, then we'll drop it all on the Board of Commissioners to let them figure it out. That's why they get the big bucks, right?
That could be done, it could be done for today's purposes within the framework of their wording, though, just change two to one, change 150 to something smaller, whatever that might be, change 200 to something smaller, and then perhaps indicate a bump in the total square footage for a certain distance from the road, and another bump perhaps if it's in a rack, something, perhaps both of those might help avoid ensnaring folks we really don't need to ensnare.
Typically, I think your racks are where you're going to see a lot more of those developments, like for instance, the one that's coming in at Cumberland that is closer to the road, so I don't know that we want to go higher in a rack.
And that's about it. Point two to make, I'll amend my statement based on your point because of that change that's going on right now.
Yeah, and maybe the solution is to say, this is the standard size, but if you document you're more than 100 feet from the right-of-way, you can get a 20% bump in size. That doesn't make everybody come in and have to do that. Only if they want a bigger sign do they have to come in and provide a survey so it's not too onerous.
What if we did this and just take in some of Mr. Boylan's comments? What if we said for, you know, we'll do one per one, for one- and two-story buildings, we could say the maximum is 100 square feet, for buildings over two stories, the maximum is 150 square feet, and then if you're 100 feet or more from the right-of-way, at that point, we could say 150 and 200.
Yeah.
Does that...
Yeah, I think that works. I would prefer that to have to be 200 feet, because 100 feet away, you can see, you can frankly see a 49-square-foot sign 100 foot away. Or, you know, where does everybody think the number should be? I like the concept.
Okay.
I'm with Fred, it needs to be much further, because one of the reasons why we looked at what we did here was if you took a standard kind of little shopping center or, you know, planned community, a PVC, UVC, and if you had a sidewalk, you had striped parking, perpendicular parking, a 24-foot driveway, another set of perpendicular parking, and then the building, once you start adding that up, you're really approaching 75 feet for those buildings that we think of as being already close to the street front, because they're not separated by that much, that much parking.
So is it 150, 200?
I think 200 is a good number for a bump for getting it, because really what we're talking about is a situation where someone gets an automatic bump without having to come for a variance, and that's all that we're really...
That's kind of the target situations and that, where they're the big box that are way off the road and they need the big building and...
Well, this morning, we were actually trying to figure out about what's the distance of this room, and it figured out it's roughly 90 feet, or this room, the length, so, you know, perhaps 200, you know, a little over twice that far, I mean, just to kind of give you a visual about, you know, as we're thinking through the distance.
This is where sports comes in helpful, so I'm guessing the length of this room is roughly the same as a basketball court. And I can read that 1-2:26 just fine, and I'm going to guess that sign is no more than one foot by three feet. So basketball courts are somewhere around 88 or 90 feet tall, are they 100?
I think you struggled. That says 1-2:27, so you got the last number wrong, so you were struggling.
I'd like the record to reflect that the time has changed.
So it's...
I think what we're all trying to get to is that while 49 is perhaps too restrictive in the current code, we need something, we need something that protects our neighborhoods and our streetscapes, and that's still a seven-by-seven-foot sign, you know, two feet by 24 feet, that signs on the front of a building, especially when they're lit and those types of things. So I like what you were talking about there as a way, kind of combining those things. If we, can we get that written down? Do we need to write that down today?
We need to make a motion out of it, so.
Let me read what I have, and then maybe if you want to turn that into a motion, I mean, this is, today it's your recommendation. You're putting forth your recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. We'll be presenting this to them again next Tuesday. So the maximum, or we would say that the wall signs could be one square foot per 100 linear feet, with no more than 100 square feet for one- and two-story buildings, no more than 150 square feet for buildings over two stories. And then, say, for buildings that are more than 200 feet from the right-of-way... And then say for buildings that are more than 200 feet from the right-of-way, the maximum could be 150 for one- and two-story and 200 for more than two stories. Is that a good start?
I think that's a good start. Does that work, or do you...
I think that's, I think that's a, well, I'm going to wait and hear what Tony says, but subject to that, I think that's a great move in the right direction, and it's going to eliminate 75% of the sign variances we currently deal with. It's going to save a lot of people a lot of time and money.
I think that it will eliminate a lot of sign variances. I think that also makes it to where it's workable for staff, kind of achieves what you're trying to do, but also is not going to be overly burdensome for staff or the applicants if we're saying that, you know, you've got to be 200 feet back to really get any additional consideration. And frankly, at that point, if people need to come ask for a variance, they can, but it significantly is going to reduce the number of variances we have. And at the end of the day, if we find out a year from now that there's something that maybe we want to tweak a little further, we can always bring forward another code amendment. So...
So we're at one foot, one square foot for every one foot of linear frontage?
Yes.
And it would be...
One square foot per linear foot.
Per linear. You had accidentally said 100.
Which would have 100, at a maximum of 100 square feet.
Right.
And then the next step that you were discussing was...
So it was, be a maximum of 100 square feet for one- and two-story buildings. Maximum of 150. Right now, we had it as 150 for that. It would be a maximum of 150 square feet for buildings more than two stories. Right now, it's sitting at 200, so bring that down. And then for buildings that are over 200 feet from the right-of-way, at that point, we could consider 150 for one- and two-stories and 200 for buildings more than two stories.
I think we can make an easy motion out of that. Just, did the clerks get what Jessica just said? Okay. Because I think we could just make a motion that we accept what Jessica just recommended.
I'm going to have one more proposed exception to that, or change to that, and it's against my own interest. Our building, the building I manage is two stories, but the, because of the floor heights and then the space above the ceiling tiles, it's more than a 20-foot-tall building, so we would get that bump right now. And my concern is that a lot of commercial, single-story strip centers and such have spaces that are more than 20 feet high. They're one story, but they're more than 20 feet high. I think we need to move that number from 20 to 30 to avoid allowing a lot of two-story and one-story building owners to get a bump they really, that we really didn't intend to give. Do we have a number in here that says 20 feet height? 20 feet in height?
Okay. So we were using 20, and we just use stories here, which does staff prefer height their stories.
I think, you know, I think it's good to Fred's point that, you know, you have some buildings that may have a very high ceiling. You think about warehouses and what have you.
Right.
So I think it is helpful to have both. And if we want to say one or two stories or less than, right now, it says 20 feet. If we want to say less than 30 feet, and then more than two stories or 30 feet, this right currently is 20 feet, so...
Okay.
If that's a change you all want to make, then we can accommodate that.
Okay. We can add that as well. You okay with that, everybody?
30 feet instead of 20.
So one or two stories less than 30 feet.
Yes.
Okay? And the other one would simply be greater than two stories.
Or...
Or more than 30.
More than 30 feet.
Or more than 30 feet.
If you occasionally get a one-story that's more than 30 feet.
Well, since the two of you have been serving on the BZA and dealing with it, and you seem to have a comfort level, then I'll say sure.
Okay. Now, do we have all that made into a motion that we can...
Would you like me to read it one more time just for the record so we're clear?
Yeah.
Okay. So the maximum wall signage will be one square foot per one linear foot. The maximum for one- and two-story buildings and buildings under 30 feet is 100 square feet. The maximum for buildings more than two stories or over 30 feet is 150 square feet. If a building is more than 200 feet from the right-of-way, then the maximum would be 150 square feet for one- and two-story buildings or buildings under 30 feet, and 200 square feet for buildings exceeding two stories and over 30 feet, or over 30 feet.
So moved.
Got it.
Just in the interest of clarity, the over 30 feet refers to height of the building, not linear feet. And then the last reference she made was for buildings that are more than 200 feet, setback more than 200 feet from the right-of-way.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So moved.
Okay. So we have a motion that we're going to recommend that as, for that. Fred, seconds. Any further discussion? Could we beat it up a little bit more? Come on. Okay. Not seeing any. Let's call a question. All in favor of the motion? Okay, and that carries four to zero.
For one hour to five, so...
Yep. Now, you haven't made a motion yet. I don't, did we make a motion on the subdivision one? I forget where we go at this.
134, 322. I don't think there was a motion on that. So let's just be, be clear here. What we're doing is that we are going to add into paragraph B that electronic signs may be utilized for and in conjunction with any freestanding sign permitted by this section except residential subdivision signs and multifamily residential signs.
That sounds good. And we are going to change the title as staff recommended.
So the change would be...
Just so that it's clear when people look that it also covers subdivisions and multifamily.
So to change the section heading to non-residential uses on residential properties, comma, and apartment and subdivision signs.
Okay. So can I be clear? So East Cobb Civic sent an email making it clear that they opposed electronic signs in residential communities, is my understanding. So are you going to allow? Is your understanding of this that it would allow electronic signs in residential communities?
It would allow electronic signs in residential communities for non-residential uses. So again, those would typically be your churches and schools. Those are typically the ones that are in residential communities that would want to have an electronic sign. And that's currently, the code does currently allow for that.
East Cobb is fine with that.
They're fine with that?
Yeah, they'd be fine.
Okay. Okay. We'll make that. Somebody want to say that's a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
I'll give it to Alice this time. And any further discussion on that one? With all that, we'll call question, and that carries four to zero. So now we have to go back to the Ostell Road, and then I think we'll finish up. I think the intent of not duplicating language in the code and in a separate document with design guidelines is really good because we see it all the time between the development standards and the county ordinance where there's conflicts where they don't agree with each other. So I like the idea of making this a cleaner way. I think we have to go tweak those design guidelines a little bit to accomplish it. In what you proposed here, I do have one, one, you know, change, and that is on the appropriability and where we get to exterior rehab or modifications to an existing building or structure that require a building or land disturbance permit. We need to put something so that if they're doing something minor that needs a permit. So I was going to say where it exceeds 25% of the tax assessor fair market value.
So, and that would be where the construction value exceeds?
Yeah. Construction value because we don't want people not to maintain their property because they are going to have to spend a fortune in upgrades to do something. I think the rest of that's fine, but I would say we need to, and I had a whole list of things here that we're going to be in the ordinance to make minor tweaks to, and I think we should, I think my recommendation is probably to wait and bring back a tweak to the overlay design guidelines at the same time as they codify this because I don't want to get in that situation where, you know, certain things just are driving it. Although, we don't have a lot of applications, so I guess we could do it. It could be a variance or a zoning case. Most of Ostell Road's going to be a zoning case if it comes anyway.
Right.
But how soon do you think you can go back and look at those guidelines and bring them forward?
I'll get with Jason, but I certainly, I think that's something that we could probably, just conservatively, I would say, bring those back in April for design guidelines.
Okay. And I have a document here I'll give you where I made notes on various things that were in the old proposed code, so that may be helpful. I don't know that that covers, I think most of the overlay was going in here, so with that, I'm going to make a motion that we accept staff recommendations, recommend approval of staff recommendations of 134, 290 with one minor, with one modification, and that would be on item 2A at the end of where it says, "Building or land disturbance permit", say where the construction value exceeds 25% of the tax assessor's fair market value.
Got it.
And that's my motion. Say it. Okay. Any further discussion on that one? Okay. All in favor? And that carries four to zero. And can we add a clerk's note recommending that the overlay guidelines be updated with consideration to the fact that it's now has the force of code?
Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, let's, we have a few minutes to take care of. And this is where we really miss Judy because she always did these motions. Not that we don't miss her on everything else, too, but Judy always made the motions for the minute. So who would like to make the motions for the minute? We have several here.
Let me guess, I'll...
Okay.
I will make a motion that the minutes of the December 9, 2020 special call planning commission be adopted, that the minutes of the January 5 special call meeting and work session of the planning commission be adopted, that the January 11 special call meeting of the Cobb County Planning Commission minutes be adopted, and that the minutes of the special call agenda and review session, as noted on January 25, that those minutes also be adopted and added to the record.
Okay. Do I have a second? Like a second from Alice? Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor? That's four to zero for approval. I don't think we have any other, any other further business, you know. Once again, I'd like to say that, you know, we're all deeply saddened with Judy's passing, and we're going to miss her immensely. She's been a driving force here for a long, long time. You know, I also want to say, you know, with the recent new Board of Commissioners and new districts and that, that we may have some different faces up here next month. We don't know for sure. So I want to say it's been a pleasure working with anybody who may not be here next month. You know, I don't want to call it out. They may be here. We don't know. We're waiting to find out, so, but I didn't want to miss opportunity to thank them and let them know I've appreciated all the efforts over the time and that. So with that, any further business? We stand adjourned.